... The right hand is up. Nope. Get me into it.
He can hit off his hands and he can hit off his legs.
What are you gonna do with your leg?
You know what, that'll go all in.
You want to get started, if you would please, join me as we stand to say the pledge and have an invocation. Pledge and lead.
To the life and the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we thank you for today. We thank you for another opportunity to come before you and do the business of Walton County. Pray that you'll be with us and give the commissioners reasoning to make the right decisions and to understand what's being done. Pray that you'll just guide this meeting and let all things be done to your glory in Jesus' name. Amen. Okay, real quick, as we're just going, if you would, if you have not already.
Ladies and gentlemen, the meeting is starting. If I can turn it down, keep the noise down. So we won't have a lot of noise. Thank you all.
If you haven't already, please go ahead and turn your phones off or put them on silent. We have as few interruptions as possible. Also, we're going to have a nine o'clock time certain end of the meeting. Anything that is not completed by nine o'clock will be moved to the next meeting. Also, I want to introduce Lord Ward, acting as the county attorney tonight. Mr. Davis is not here. And Wayne, what have you got for us?
Chairman, I have just one announcement. We do have one withdrawal that's on your agenda. That is the Indian Women Road Small Scale Amendment. They have asked for that to be withdrawn. So I just want to mention that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We need a motion?
Yes, sir, please.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Chairman, the first item on our agenda is a legislative item. It is a...
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, David. We have the amendments. Everybody should have an opportunity to review them. If we have any questions or we have a motion.
Motion. Motion to approve this, ready?
In a second.
A second.
Any questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Amendment approved.
Mr. Chairman, this is, first item on our agenda is a legislative item. It is relating to dogs and outdoor eating areas ordinance. This was originated by the Board of County Commissioners and it allows for dogs to be in outdoor areas for public food establishments during certain operating hours and providing for regulations and permit procedures for such. This again was something that was initiated by the Board of County Commissioners. We're bringing this forward by staff tonight and we'll be happy to answer any questions if we can on this item.
Commissioners, have any questions?
I have a motion.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
I have a second.
Just the motion to accept?
To approve. Dogs in outdoor eating areas.
Is this a public area?
Yeah, we're going to legislate it. We're gonna take public comments.
And a second question.
To do what?
To approve item number one.
No, I mean, we haven't heard public comment on yet, have we?
No, we're fixing to.
I'm not gonna motion to approve it. I can vote to approve it. But I'm probably gonna publish, gotta say.
We're fixing to have public comments.
You have a motion to approve?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the second one is...
We have any members of the public who wish to speak on item number one, the dogs in public place? Is that better? Any members of the public wish to speak on the first item? Seeing none, we'll close the public comments. Commissioners?
I just have one question, staff. Who's... Do you... On this, the dog, when it...
The legal department prepared this, but I'll do my best to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Mike's question was, there seemed to be pretty, the director, the ability to, for this one violation, to completely revoke their license to do business as a food establishment.
Uh huh.
I mean, penalties and stuff notwithstanding, it seemed pretty punitive to me to take, to have that written into this work. If you could explain to me maybe this work, whoever wrote it, then, why, you know, why it wasn't a fine, or is there a fine system or a couple of, I think revoke a restaurant's license because somebody doesn't take care of it?
And David, if I recall, just from some of the discussions around this at various meetings, I believe one of the concerns was, you know, you have a dog that could be, could cause bodily harm to someone else and that was, I believe, a very important consideration. And my assumption is, is that that threat that could potentially happen warranted more extreme measures when it can't, when it comes to any sort of revocation of someone's ability to bring their dog and so forth. That's my recollection, some of the meetings we had and so that's, if I had to, to...
There is any, there is some process to find them or give them a warning and stuff like that, besides just revocation of their license, if I'm, if I remember reading this right. But it left it pretty much up to you and not the BCC to revoke their license, right?
And obviously, anything like that, we would consult, I mean, I know that I would consult heavily with the legal department before I revoked anything and so that's something that, it's in there, but that's not something that I would take lightly and it would, it would be with much consideration from the legal department, from my point of view, as long as I'm here.
Was it written that it would revoke their license to operate as a restaurant? Or was it written that you would revoke their license to have dogs in their outdoor area?
If I'm not mistaken, I believe it would revoke their ability to bring the dogs to the outdoor area.
Okay, so they're not shutting the restaurant down?
Right, right.
That's the way I read it, but I'm not a legal beagle, but I was, I was concerned about that and I would just ask you to, standing, I would just ask you to review that portion of it and...
We certainly will.
I understand that our elected officials revoke in their license if that's the case. But when we leave it up to the planning director without any say-so of the BCC about it, I mean, there's nothing, no provision in there that they even have any say-so after you've made a decision, which may or may not be a good thing, just brought it in, just bringing it to attention and to the attention of the public. That's my piece.
Anybody else? Do we have a motion in a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, item number two.
Mr. Chairman, this is a, some modifications amendment to chapter thirteen. This is the scenic corridor language in our ordinance. The, we and the legal department work very closely with the design review board to develop new colors and plant materials and so forth. And this proposed ordinance reflects those changes that's been recommended by those groups and staff concurs with that. We're here to answer any questions if you may have some. We do have some, I believe, some individuals that wanted to speak to this item, Mr. Chairman, and so we would defer to them as well.
Uh huh.
Some individuals, we have several people, I believe, wanting to speak to these items.
I have a question as to a staff.
Go ahead.
Are you presenting this one?
I am. Mac now will.
Okay. My question to staff was, I saw that there was no change proposed in the outdoor display of merchandise for correcting the issues like, we have currently on Highway ninety-eight and three thirty-one, the ability to park cars out in front of small mart, Publix's and shopping centers all up and down the road, but we don't have, you can have all those cars out there, but you can't have them for sale. And I know that myself and several others in the business community have had the opportunity to tell Mercedes dealerships, BMW dealerships, Ford, Chrysler Mercury, et cetera, that you can't come here unless you build a glass building and put it on the county, which seems to make no sense to me. You can see them through glass and have them, you can have all the cars in the world and trucks parked out there. My recommendation would be at this time that the board take a look at fixing that part of the code, because the jobs that are brought in and the tax money that can be brought in by dealerships, rather than all our citizens having to drive over to Bay County and Okaloosa County to have their cars serviced or to purchase cars. So, other than Dufuniac, of course, we have a dealership up there. That was one of the shortcomings I saw of this revision and I wanted to bring that to you. Your attention, asking you to bring that to the board as they would adjust that.
We will, we will make them aware of that concern when we bring this forward to the board. I will tell you that only until recently where we were, was the ability to have any outdoor display, really, and so, but, but the scenic corridor regulations are, do prohibit, you know, any kind of display, as Mr. Kramer talked about. This, the outdoor display language was, I believe, approved last year or two years ago and what was approved was a very limited area and so that's what staff has, has been charged with enforcing, so, but we'll be glad to make that, your comments available to the Board of County Commissioners, have them aware of...
Well, every time I get an opportunity in the scenic corridor to make that pitch, it's gonna be one of my pitches, because it just seems a terrible waste to not have those opportunities for jobs and taxable income coming into the county, when it can certainly be controlled and we already have cars and trucks parked all over that corridor.
Correct.
Another question I have, if I may, Mr. Chairman, regarding the heights and could you fill us in on where we are currently on the status of community directory signs that were, that are in the scenic corridor provision?
I've not been involved with the community directory signs. Mac, you wanna answer that?
Community directory signs were determined to be illegal signs by DOT and that's why they're down.
Well, I understand that. We still have them in the code. It might be an opportunity at this time, if that's the case, to strike that provision from the code, so it's not a litigating point at some point in the future. I mean, they've made that decision, but it seems like a good opportunity to strike that language while we're making changes, if it's, if it's no longer something we're gonna do.
We can add that recommendation.
I just make that recommendation. Let's see. Was there any change or proposed change in the parking requirements for those businesses having outdoor seating in this provision?
No, there wasn't really. The Board of County Commissioners authorized us to move forward with really a narrow scope when it came to the design review board, it's really related to colors and plant materials. And that was the...
Landscaping, building materials, color. It was limited to those three items.
And if they go, went beyond those three items, we didn't, we didn't look at it.
Well, it's a change to that ordinance and I'd just like to bring up the entire scope of the ordinance, since we're making changes to it and it seems like they're relatively simple. One of the other things I wanted to bring to your attention, as far as change to it, in map thirteen-two, where it shows the scenic corridor for three thirty-one, ninety-eight, it shows that the three thirty-one, three ninety-three collector is named as a portion of the scenic corridor. However, in map thirteen-four, in the scenic highway designation, all of three ninety-three is removed from the scenic corridor designation. I'd like to see that those two would be synonymous. Either remove three ninety-three completely from both of them or add three ninety-three so that they meet the same criteria.
The Florida scenic highway designation is a state designation, where we applied for those roads through a state program and to add those, we would have to modify or request to modify that designation. That's not a county designation.
What about removing three ninety-three from the scenic corridor provisions?
That is a county designation and was the direction of the BCC.
Well, what it says to me is that if you don't meet the criteria, because it's already so developed to be scenic, why are we naming it scenic for just the last few people that have any development along there? It seems to me it was, it's another opportunity to change, in my opinion, a provision of that ordinance that's not in conformity with portions of itself.
That's, I mean, I guess that's a recommendation.
The map for the Florida scenic highway designation has no implementing regulations in the land development code. None of those things apply to that particular map. It's merely a map to provide clarity and a distinction between the two types of scenic corridors.
And those are things that are beyond the scope of what was looked at in this, at this time. I think there's recommendations that can be made to look at in the future, but...
Well, so, that's what, you know, nobody told me that before we got here.
And that's what we're going over now.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. Regarding the specifics of the ordinance that you got in there, the non-native plants that are on the lists currently, why did we retreat, why did we keep some of the non-native plantings and why did we remove others? My question, specifically Craig Myrtle, being a non-native, we've left it as a, I think it's an accessory or ancillary planting, but it's also shown as an understory tree as well.
And David, those recommendations came straight from the DRB and that's what their wishes were, as far as what they proposed. As you know, the DRB is composed of design experts, landscape architects, architects, so forth, and we brought what they had, we brought forward exactly what they had suggested we bring forward. Now, there are some people here tonight that wanna, that wanna talk about those plant materials and I believe there may be some that should be added to that list and so, but to answer your question as far as how and why they, they were put forward, straight from the DRB, straight from their recommendations.
Okay, so, anybody from the DRB here that we can question?
I'm not sure.
That came as a witness?
I'm not sure.
Did they come up with the colors?
It's a legislative item, so there's no witnesses. It's a legislative item.
It's just nice to know the criteria for decision-making.
Did they come up with the colors too?
Yes. And, and they met, gosh, for probably over a year now, going through these, these lists and these items. They are very deliberate about this, a lot of input and so, but yeah, it was a quite lengthy process and they, I think, I thought they're very thorough and very diligent in their recommendations.
So you know what these colors are? Because we don't have any color show, we just got codes.
If you, we do have a Muncil colored book in the back. If you'd like us to go through that, we'd be glad to do that.
It's okay.
I trust the DRB.
We purchased a new book, so they're expanding the color palette.
Gotcha.
So these, I know, the codes don't tell you a lot, but those are the codes out of the book. So now we have two books. We have the existing one and then we have a new one.
We have a book available to the public?
Yeah, they can come and look at, the problem, we cannot copy the book, because the colors are altered when you copy it. We have great color copiers, but the colors, they don't reflect the color in the book when you copy it. That's the reason why we can't make copies of it. But yeah, so the book here, if anyone has any questions or wants to look at the, from the public or from anywhere else, we have it available. We're glad to make it available to the public to look at.
Bringing this to your attention right now, I'm colorblind, so this really is kind of a moot point to me, but it's about numbers and letters at this point to me, because how it would affect me and other people who are colorblind. Those numbers and letters that are spelled out in the code specifically relate to pages in there that they can look at.
Yes.
And how do those translate to the paint manufacturer or the distributor who is mixing the paints out there? Do they operate on the same Muncil code for mixing or is it different between Home Depot, Lowe's and Ace, et cetera?
I'm not a paint expert, but my, my belief is, is that those, those, the numbers and the colors can be reproduced fairly easily. I do know that, you know, it's a matter of mixing colors to come up with different colors. I'm not an expert in that field. Mac may be, I'll let him answer that, but I do believe they can be replicated by any paint manufacturer.
I think they can by chip and I don't know, you wanna take the book down to every place you've gotta go, since you can't copy it.
We don't let the book out of our sight.
Okay.
Because it's a legal representation of those colors. It will not photocopy. There's nothing online that you can look at that is similar to that. It's a hard copy book.
How do we get that code?
Advocates bring in paint chips from their particular paint manufacturer and physically match the colors.
With those paints, I'm sure have mixing codes that they use to come up with the colors.
So that's how it's...
Some of the manufacturers may actually have a cross-reference to the Muncil books, not all do.
Okay.
But we look at...
That's what I wonder, if it was an industry-wide standard, that those numbers and letters were affixed to those particular colors or whether it was, bring it into a color chart, you bring your sample, like you suggested?
It's an industry standard that has the identification, the African-American identification, but they actually bring in their manufacturers' color chips and match them up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Anybody else?
I just have one question concerning chapter thirteen of our ordinance. The building materials that are allowed now, I read in there that metal siding is allowed on the corridor of thirty-eight. Is that just on a...
And I, I believe that's a new addition to the, to the materials and I think that we've had several requests for that over the, I know in my past five years, there's been, we've had requests for that and it's been accepted.
We're only amending, we're not amending thirty-eight, we're only amending US ninety-eight and three thirty-one.
Right.
But I think that is true. There's no metal on the ninety-eight scenic corridor. It has to have some sort of facade.
Right.
You can have metal, but thirty-eight, for whatever reason, they didn't make that same change. They didn't, they didn't, they allow it there where they don't allow it on Highway ninety-eight.
Is there any way to amend that and not allow metal on thirty-eight?
The Board of County Commissioners would have to give us permission to pursue that.
Can we make a recommendation?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, the way typically would work, if the planning commission has a certain desire and recommendation, we could bring it forward to the board. The board could then, if they see fit, authorize the staff to bring forward an amendment for such a change and then we would, staff would carry it through that process.
We make that possibly on a note on this item?
Yes, we certainly can and we've got, it's the same as David's comments too, we'll make those aware, make the board aware of those as well.
Yeah, they allow the cement fiber board. That's, that's very aesthetically kind and very glimmering.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Do we have a motion on this? Do we need a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the ordinance with the note of that change to the metal on thirty-eight.
And also the note.
Same, if you'll amend it to the recommendations that I made as well, at least they'll look at them.
What was his second recommendation?
And I believe David's recommendation was regarding auto dealerships and cars, right?
And community directory signs be removed from the ordinance, since we don't, we're not, they're not legal anymore and it's still in the ordinance. And there was no, I did have one, one other question that was specific to this. How did we, and why did we get to the limitation of cupola towers as a percentage of the footprint of the buildings?
Do you guys recall that? I don't, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I didn't really understand it. I wanted to better understand it.
We have a number of architects on the design review board and that seemed to be something important to them.
Yeah, that, that almost doesn't tell me the, what the public, how that protects or helps the public.
It makes it a percentage of the building, because right now you can just go seventy feet.
Fifty feet.
Seventy in the scenic corridor.
Oh, for...
Cupola, anything non-habitable, spires and things like that.
Okay.
Architectural features, you can go up to seventy feet. The design reviewer thought, well, do we really want that? I mean, it's so out of...
Out of proportion?
Yeah, so if you do it as a percentage of the building, then it keeps it proportionate to the overall size of that building, so that's why they made the change. We haven't really had much of that. I mean, a lot of, we don't have much request to go above the fifty feet, but that was their concern, was you'd have something that just looked out of proportion, especially with what might be around it, so they're suggesting that change.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Do we have any members of the public? Ms. Nielsen?
My name's Mary Nielsen. I believe that there's a new product out and it may not even be that new. Do I have to be sworn?
No, it's legislation.
Not for this, okay. There's some new products out that they're making hotels and different commercial facilities out of that are metal siding and I believe they are being used in some instances in residential construction. It's not what you may perceive as shiny metal. It may have a whole different look to it or something and I would research that first before making a recommendation, whether it should or shouldn't be used on thirty-eight or ninety-eight or whatever, because things in the construction industry evolve over time and a lot of wonderful new products are coming out that look like something else, like real stucco or whatever, and they actually are more weather resistant and better for our climate. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Bradford Davis?
Hi, my name is Bradford Davis. I'm a landscape architect and I was given the revisions to the code and I wanted to add a good list of other plans that I think would help landscape architects make scenic ninety-eight and the other corridors a better looking place. I think right now we're limited in what we're allowed to use. I've gone over this with several of my fellow professionals and I think it's a pretty good list and we've got a PowerPoint here that we can look at and I will go through it very quickly.
When you do each one of them, would you let us know which of each are native and which are non-native species?
I will give you my list.
If you had, if you give it over there, so we could all get a copy. That'd be, well, it'll determine which are native and non-native.
Yes, you see that list, they're highlighted clearly. I can't exactly see, so I think you can kind of read along and I'm gonna leave my list back, actually. So I know what's going on.
You don't have it by memory?
Sorry?
You don't have it by memory?
Not yet, no, but, the first section, I wanted to add canopy trees, two varieties of magnolias, little gem and coastal gem. Both of them are very salt tolerant. They don't get too big like a regular southern magnolia. And then a black gum. These plants are not on the list and they're not in the pictures.
Which one was the second one? Black gum. That's, that's a native or indigenous plant?
Yeah, when I get to the non-natives, I'll, I'll give you a notice. And understory trees, in the code, we've got wax myrtle and yopon holly, but they're classified as shrubs. I think if you use a tree form wax myrtle or a tree form yopon holly, they should be considered understory trees. They're evergreen, the yopons berry. The next slide will show eastern red cedar and a fully booted cabbage palm, which I believe would be great understory trees.
Yes, did you present these to the DRB?
I have, yes, sir.
You did, okay.
Yes. In my next list, these are large shrubs and all of them will be native until I get to potocarpus. Rusty leonia, beauty berry, wax myrtle and yopon holly. Again, same, same shrub, but different use. You can let a wax myrtle get full and a yopon holly get full from the bottom and then you have a great big shrub, or you can take the lower branches off and have a small tree.
Well, you're saying there's a deficiency in the code currently that doesn't allow them to be their only name? The wax myrtle is named as, currently as understory tree, is that correct?
One or the other.
Which is?
I don't know, but I could, I could tell you that I think we should have the flexibility to use them as either a shrub or a small tree.
I'd agree with that.
Okay. Then we have, on the next slide, we've got devilwood osmanthus, Walters Viburnum, saw palmetto and silver saw palmetto.
Saw palmetto is indigenous, is that right, both?
You can't get rid of them, yes, sir.
Right.
And then we've got needle palm, sparkle berry, buckeye, and these are, these are great native plants that grow here. They're not like a knockout rose, you're not gonna see a flower all the time, but when you see a buckeye flower, it makes you smile, I guarantee it. Then we've got fetter bush, inkberry, and we don't have a picture of potocarpus, but if you can imagine in between the big palm trees at Alice Beach, that's what those are. And I think those are a great not-native shrub that we should include in the list. Moving along to small shrubs, Walters dwarf viburnum, it's a great small shrub, dwarf blueberry, Saint John's Wort and yucca, all of them flower, all of them native. And then the next slide, we'll start to get into ground covers and sedges and grasses. Spartina paytons, panic grass, blue flag iris and breeze grass is not a native. I want to point that out, but those are great. DOT loves these plants, because they're very drought tolerant, they're easy to maintain. And the next slide should start with ferns. Okay, we've got cinnamon fern, southern shield fern and blue-eyed grass. An autumn fern on that slide over there, all natives. Then we've got Florida coriopsis, what do you got there?
Is that a ground cover vine or just a plant?
It's actually the state flower.
Right.
And it can be seeded or it can be planted in one gallon pots, but when you have the scenic corridor where you're required to have two plants per every linear foot and we only have six or seven plants to choose from, can you imagine a whole great big swath of that planted? It would be beautiful.
Are you saying that wire grass isn't on there, or you just have it up there?
I'm not sure if wire grass is on there or not, I just want to make sure it is. I've only been working on this for about 48 hours, so, not to forgive. And then you've got, I can't see, what is that up there?
You can try that one, can you see that one any better?
No, anyway, let's do the next slide. Okay, thaca hachi grass, they make a giant version and they make a small version, both native grasses, unlike a lot of the other grasses we use here, they have wide blades, it's a great textural difference between like mullein grass, for folks that like grasses. And then, let's go, let's hit the next one. Oh, thank you. Okay, we've got creeping rosemary, blue fern, plumago and rosemary, not native, but great plants.
Which, none of those?
None of them are native.
Okay.
But they're great plants that I don't think should be excluded. Now we've got three other natives here, we've got goldenrod beach sunflower and milkweed. All of those are native, they attract butterflies, birds, and they give a great big burst of color. Again, think about a thousand feet of frontage and you've got to have 2,000 plants, wouldn't it be great to have a whole huge planting of native Florida plants that would just make you feel like, hey, I'm in South Walton County? That's it. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Mr. Bradford, do you have, I mean, Mr. Davis, do you have any list, any portion of your list that you're gonna be able to give to staff so that...
They have it.
Okay, and do you have them marked which are native and which are non-native?
Just like that.
And that's a yes?
Yes sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public wish to be heard? Yes ma'am?
Hi, Lee Moore. Couple of things, I am on the Design Review Board, and we don't have a landscape architect on the DRB, and we should, we need one desperately.
Mr. Davis?
We didn't, I know, the problem is, we don't have any openings on the Board, and we haven't for a little while, not too long, but a little while. We didn't this year, this past year, so I would love for Mr. Davis or another landscape architect, he's wonderful, to be on that Board, because we...
You attend a lot of their meetings, right?
I'm on the Board.
And, yes.
Yes.
How do you think about, what do you feel about his recommendation for all the native plannings that he added that weren't on the list? Think that they should be incorporated or could be incorporated?
I, I do, and I just saw them today, so let me put that, have that caveat there. But I do, you know, they, they all look wonderful, I can't imagine Mr. Davis and his cohorts or his associates would recommend something that's invasive or, you know, causes any type of problem. And we, we do need more opportunities for color in the landscape palette, as long as it looks like it belongs here. So these seem like very good recommendations. I'm not 100% sure, I was trying to glance through as he was talking, I think some of these may already be on the list, or either, and one of the reasons this came up, just to give you a tiny bit of background, and this will be quick, is that we were getting some requests for deviations of plant material that were very, very close, like the same species but a little different type of things that were already on the list, so we tried to expand that. And we did get input from Mr. Davis and another landscape architect very, very early on, and this did take over a year, so I think some things may have gotten lost in translation over time. The other thing I wanted to mention, the last thing I wanted to mention is that some of the plants that are not native, I don't believe are asterisked on that list.
They're not.
And I pointed this out, and it didn't ever make it into the copy. So the two that I know of right now are a couple of palms, the Sylvester palm and the majule palm. So I think what happened is when, you'll notice that some got added, and I think they went through and did the asterisking before the plants got added, and the ones that got added that were not native never got an asterisk.
Right.
That's what I'm, think I'm seeing. So that needs to be corrected, and I don't have the knowledge to correct that, or I would have already, but, but that's something that needs to be corrected. A question for staff, with this much change, I don't know how this works, I'm fairly new to the DRB, does this need to go back to the DRB if we're considering adding all of these plants?
Basically, it may be back to the DRB.
Okay.
It'll move forward as a recommendation for the planning.
Okay, great, so I think this is good to be looking at this, and I wish it had all gotten done back in the beginning of the process, but some things...
Can I ask you a question about oleander, do you know, or if it's a non-native or a native species?
Non-native.
Fine, that's all I needed to know.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it. Anybody else? Okay, I believe we have a motion and a second on the table, do we want to...
Do we need to amend that?
That was my question, do we want to amend that to make a recommendation?
I do.
Bradford's list, Davis's list?
I'll make the motion.
You need to amend yours.
I'll amend it to include the changes that we've discussed, and I have one more question.
Okay.
I'm sorry, but I need to know what the side setbacks and rear setbacks are. They were struck through in red, like they're not gonna be, it was paragraph seven, rear and side yard setbacks. I didn't know why they were struck out. Page 20, 20 of 66. It's referring to...
That's the side yard buffers.
Okay.
They wanted to refer back to chapter five, that's confusing language, because it talks about, it has to be less than, it can't be less than 10 feet, but when you go back to chapter five, 10 feet says between residential and residential, and it says no buffers required in the rear, so it struck out because they just wanted to refer back to the buffering requirements in chapter five.
Okay, so we are safe to say that we have...
But it's not a setback, it's a landscape buffer.
It's just a landscape buffer, okay.
Because right now, I brought to the DRB's attention that in the scenic corridor, there's no requirement for a rear buffer, so you may have residential back there, but it specifically says you do not have to have a rear buffer, so this is hoping to solve that problem as well as some confusion in the way the language is written as well.
Very well, thank you.
You've added amendment, you need to...
Wait, wait, she's submitting her motion to include what changes the landscaping...
The landscaping.
Those changes offered by Mr. Bradford Davis on that handout that you got.
The plant species recommended by Mr. Davis.
Both native and non-native.
That's okay with both the motion and the second, so.
And I made the note of the metal scenic 38 on a come-to-come basis, I guess, a case-to-case basis, because...
Okay. That was in your original version?
Yeah.
That was in your original version.
Yeah.
And to take metal buildings...
On a case-to-case.
On a case-to-case basis?
Right.
I'm not seconding that.
Okay.
Somebody else can, I'm not gonna second that.
Do you second?
I just like Ms. Nielsen said, I think there's metal building materials that we need to research for...
Well, this metal building probably looks like wood or...
And this is about 30, this is about 98 and 331 scenic corridor only, and this is bringing in the 38 corridor into it as a recommendation. I can't second that.
Okay, do we have a second?
Well, it was written on a case-to-case basis, it said in the...
This is not dealing with 38, this whole thing is not dealing with 38.
All right.
What do you want to do with your motion?
Well, I guess I'll retract that.
Okay.
Okay.
That portion of it?
That portion, yeah.
Then I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Carrie, you got everything square?
So, take it off of the original motion also, right? It's just...
The metal building on 38.
It said scenic corridors and vistas, so I thought that meant the scenic 38, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, I understand, but I have a different opinion about it too, and that's the only reason I bring it to everybody's attention, especially in light of what Ms. Nielsen said about new materials all the time.
Okay. So we have a motion and we have a second. Any further questions? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and before we move on to quasi-judicial, we have one change to the agenda that's been requested by staff, and I agree with, to move item number 13, the Kaya PUD, up to the top of the quasi-judicial items. Do we need a motion to do that?
Some no.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion?
I think they were anticipating it.
Yeah. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we need to swear everybody in this point.
Anyone who plans to testify during this quasi-judicial section, if you'll please stand and raise your right hand?
On any item during...
Any item in the quasi-judicial agenda. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give in this quasi-judicial proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. I need to also inquire of the Commissioners, have any of you received any ex parte communications with regard to any of the items on tonight's agenda?
I did.
Okay, David, have you disclosed that information to the clerk?
No, I printed a copy out and I'll send it to him, it's just regarding the Fox Lake project.
Okay, just make sure you disclose that to the clerk, and is that communication, do you feel that it will prevent you from making a fair and impartial decision in the hearing tonight?
No.
Okay.
Just need to let you know, I got, I got an email from somebody regarding it.
Okay, and you'll forward that to the clerk?
Yes.
Okay, anybody else?
For our purposes tonight, not specifically with respect to Kaya, but there's the Fambro matter that's come before us.
Yes.
That's Dr. Fambro, who set my arm when I was about 10 years old, eight years old. I know him, I know all his partners, I grew up with his kids, there is no way that I would be able to separate myself fully from that one, I don't think to satisfy the public.
Okay, well, when we get to that item, if you'll recuse yourself for any consideration, John, that'd be great.
I will.
All right, anybody else? Okay, we can move forward.
Mr. Chairman, the Kaya PUD, I don't want to belabor the point, this was heard at the last meeting, I don't want to delay it, the applicant had a notice error, which caused them to have to come back through the process again. As you're aware, it's a mixed-use project on 38, actually straddles, goes north side of 38 and also on the south side of 38, mixed-use project, it's a PUD, they're asking for two deviations for the PUD, one is a setback deviation, and the other is a deviation regarding the phases coming back through as major developments, they want those to be minor developments, and staff is not opposed to that, those two deviations, and again, you've heard this at your last meeting, so I won't belabor the point anymore, but those are the basics of the development.
Anybody have questions for staff at this point?
Just that, I thought you had an objection to the deviations going from major to minor at our last meeting about this property, is that, is your opinion different from the last?
It's not different from the last meeting, because I was not here at that meeting, I was on vacation.
Well, it's my recollection, I don't know if everybody else remembers, and I don't remember who said it, but it was my recollection that regarding the major and minor deviations, that staff didn't have an opinion about it one way or the other.
From, and this is something I've said before, so it's not, nothing that's new, my opinion about the major, minor deviations regarding phases, if you have a development that is, has detailed, detailed enough to where nothing new will be brought forward with a, another application to carry out those phases, I'm not opposed to the deviations. The code is written to where if it's over 5,000 square feet and it's non-residential, it does have to be reviewed as a major. I will tell you, in projects that have sufficient detail to where another hearing would not be of any value, then I would not be opposed to that. As long as it's approved in its initial stages and nothing changes from that, I would not be opposed to that.
Even though they be over 5,000 square feet?
Right, as long, as long as it's approved by the Board of County Commissioners and that deviation's approved, I would not have any objection to that whatsoever.
Anybody else have questions for staff before we get going? You're up, sir.
Yes, sir. Good evening, my name is David Theriak, I represent the applicant. Before I call our first witness, I'd like to do a housekeeping issue. I gave, I distributed a three-ring binder at the beginning of the meeting, I'd like to just walk through that very briefly, then move it into evidence, if that would be acceptable when Mr. Chairman. Exhibit one is the staff report dated April 14, 2016. Exhibit two is our PowerPoint presentation, we have truncated our presentation, so it will be shorter than it was last time. On tab three is a copy of our site plans, tab four is our landscape plan.
May I ask you if there's any, any changes substantially to any of this material, other than a truncated presentation of your PowerPoint from what was presented at the previous meeting?
In these documents, there are some changes in the PowerPoint presentation.
Okay, and if there are any changes in any of the other exhibits in this?
No, sir.
Could you bring those to our attention?
Yes, I did last go around, the next exhibits are the resumes of our experts. Five is Mauricio Castro, six is Patrick Hodges, seven is Patrick Amhoff, eight is Scott Jenkins, and nine is Joe Poole. I'd like to introduce the exhibits one through nine into evidence.
Got it.
Thank you, I'll call our first witness, which will be Scott Jenkins, please.
Good evening, I'm Scott Jenkins with Jenkins Engineering, I have been sworn in. Just really quickly, I'll just run down the basics of the project, as you guys are aware, we're, we're back for a second time, so I'm sure you're fairly familiar with it. The project is about 26 acres on the north side of the roadway of 38, just east of the intersection of Watersound Parkway, and about 2.2 acres on the south side that line up. The project consists of four different land uses, which is, which is interesting, I'm sorry, three different land uses, which is infill, small neighborhood, and traditional neighborhood, so in order to blend all those uses, we're doing a PUD to blend those things together and meet those requirements. The property or the project will consist of a total of 54 single-family dwelling units, 21 townhomes, and 73 condominium units, for a total of 148 units. It will also have approximately 138,000 square feet of commercial space associated with it. The north side of 38 is primarily, the residential sections are back here, the commercial sections are here, they're off to 100 feet away from the area to the south, currently there's condominiums in this corner, the condominiums over here. This side of the project consists of residential component along with the beach amenity along the side of the beachfront here. Just generally, as far as the design goes, we've designed the subdivision in all the commercial spaces for the 100-year storm event to retain that, we have an extensive underground drainage system. There's also some proposed improvements to be done that will be part of a right-of-way agreement with the county along the corridor 38, that will include some, some widening turn lanes, potentially some parking on the north side only, new bike paths, and improving some underground power through there, putting the power underground, and fixing some drainage problems. I'll be happy to answer any technical questions you guys may have about this, but really nothing's changed from the last meeting.
So you weren't able to obtain even a bike path access over to the St. Joe Parkway there?
No, sir, not yet. Still, still working on it though, but not, not at this time.
Thank you, sir.
Wayne?
Chairman, I have one question, I know that I've received several comments and some emails regarding the southern piece of property on, along the Gulf, particularly the beach club there, and there's some concerns about compatibility at all, and those things, just wondering if you guys had, have y'all seen those, have you had any comments about that?
Yes, that was the major point of discussion at the last meeting, and, and we have, and David and Mauricio will be able to talk a little bit more about that, but after the meeting, because we do get the opportunity to come back before you again on this, we did come up with some ideas to try to mitigate some of those concerns, I think, and Mauricio will share those too, with some double walls and extra landscaping and things that are, that may be a better option. We feel like what we, what we're proposing meets the current requirements, and we can move forward with that if you want us to, but we do have another option that you guys can consider if you want to include that in, in the recommendation you make.
Okay.
Thank you, Scott. Mauricio Castro, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Mauricio Castro with Place Alliance, I've been sworn already. I'm gonna do a brief presentation, last time I was a little bit long, so I'm gonna try to make it shorter this time. My company's name is Place Alliance, we're located in Orlando, we have works all over the state and all over the country, we specialize in planning urban design, landscape, and community. I'm a principal in charge of the company, my role is the design principal, and mainly do the urban design and architecture. Kaya, as last time, we see Kaya as an opportunity to continue with the story of 38 and the great communities that have been created here for the last 30 years or so, beginning with Seaside, followed by Watercolor, Alice Beach, Rosemary Beach, and Attoria Avenue. So we see Kaya as part of that story, the great story of 38, and what brings into, into the community and the whole region. First off, as Scott described, it's composed of two areas, one to the north of 38, the one to the south of 38, we had some environmental considerations, some wetlands within this site that we had to, to combine and maneuver with. The key component of Kaya was to make it compact, walkable, open, connected as much as we could to the elements that, that we had in place. Obviously, our main frontage is on 30A, so the, the key there was to come in and develop a series of experiences, mainly terminated vistas, and open space, and open park, engaging what 30A is all about. We're, we're able to bring into the project different aspects of placemaking through parks, through different building types, through different street sections, and the combination of all those is what makes up Kaya. On the, on the screen, you will see some of the shots and views of, on 30A looking into Kaya. One of the main gestures that we did is, is this great frontal park that is pretty much abutting 30A, along the improvements that Scott described earlier. What we have there is an opportunity to create a space that's not just for Kaya, but the whole of the community. As you can see, we're trying to be very picturesque with the location of the architecture. We're considering the heights, that's very important, the compatibility with the surrounding communities, and how it may work as a whole. We're also thinking about improvement on 30A, how would that look and feel, north side, south side of 30A. We're considering the improvement of the existing trail and having apparel system to the north of, of the trail within Kaya's property, to make kind of a double system that may come from the east side on Alice Beach and continue to the west through Kaya. Moving forward, and in terms of connecting to the rest of, of the community, what you see on the screen, and, we don't have the board up there, but what you see on the screen is a pedestrian and multi-trail system that we see connecting to the existing trail on 30A and, and the features that we have within the site. The natural features that we have within the site, to the north, east of, of the site, we have a, a wetland open system that connects to the north. What we'd like to do is, is get access to that area, so you can view it and, and enjoy it properly. We have two points of connection. As you can see, we're, we're thinking about multi-use trails and pedestrian trails, and they all connect through the, through the master plan seamlessly, and again, connected to the front into 30A.
This is for public access, right?
That is correct, for public access. It's not gated, it's not controlled, it's all open, so it can be, can be enjoyed by everybody. We see here is what Scott described earlier. This is a breakdown of the land uses, the different lot sizes and, and building types, as I described before. We arrange them in terms of intensity, the highest intensity towards 30A. And as you go to the north, it's, it's less intense, as you meet the actual reserve that's on the back. And then as you go towards the beach, we have a series of homes that are arranged properly. We, again, within the same idea of being picturesque, we're trying to, to, to make sure that everything has the same quality as it goes south, and that terminates into a public amenity, which is a pool, and, and a pool house by the beach side. I'm going over this details. Now, in terms of the architecture, what you see here is a conceptual idea of what the architecture would be. We're trying to be very respectful about the, again, the region, trying to kind of blend all these ideas together. We feel strongly about the local vernacular that has been created through the different stages of, of the projects. So we're picking into those cues. We want to be part of the, of the deal, of, of the grade 30A, we will, and not come in with some imposing elements of architecture.
Mauricio, before you provide an explanation at this juncture, you're about to present, I believe, a response to some of the comments that we heard at the last planning commission, to see if there was a way to provide better buffering and, and sound attenuation. Is that where you're, you're headed next?
That is correct.
And if I recall correctly, one of the expert witnesses, Mr. Dupu, had suggested that the entranceway be through the middle of the project, rather than being routed on the western side.
That is correct. You're talking about the access from the squareabout that is on the south to the actual pool air, pool area, where, where, and then down to the beach.
Could you, and, and I know this is simply a offer, if the planning commission likes this iteration better, then we would ask for this to be part of the recommendation. We had a unanimous approval on what we've already just presented, but we would like to have you all take a look and see if you like this better. So Mauricio-
Is this something that, I guess is a result of public comments-
Yes, sir.
-before?
Yes, sir.
Concerns?
Go ahead, sir.
You're trying to address concerns that were brought up-
Direct concern regarding noise from the pool and the, the pedestrian traffic going down to the beach. So please, Mauricio, if you could walk that through.
Thank you, David. So, I'm going to go slowly here, because this is what we have not seen, the, the prior part, the prior part was what you all seen before. So, going back to some of the concerns that we've heard from standpoint of access to the pool area, the amenity area, the actual adjacency of, of the access that we had designed it before, that was pretty much abutting the western side of, of the, of the property. We did two main things. The first one was design wall system and a buffer system that allows for sound attenuation. We talked about that before. We said that we would do and, and design a system which will attenuate the sound coming, potentially coming from the, the pool area and the access that, to the actual pool and beach area. And we also rearranged some of the buildings to be able to have like-facing like, if you will. Kind of having, you know, house next to a house, so all that traffic and all that noise will be centered, as David described, through, through the, through that particular area into the, into the pool. So what you see here, what you're going to see here is a plan, I'm going to use the cursor here if I can, unfortunately, oh, here goes, it's an error. So what you see here is, this is the squareabout where you have the, pretty much the turnaround from the traffic standpoint. There were some worries in the past about cars shining lights into the beach area. What we've done is, we, we actually moved the access to the basement area of this building, on the, on the east side of the building, so this will be your main connection to underground parking, bicycle parking, and other specific elements for this, for condo units, for the, the pool building here. And through the middle, whereas before we had direct access here on the west side of the property, we moved to the center. This is pretty much based on recommendations from the witness expert before. And we're able to manage the access through the middle of, of, of these four condo units. So we separated the condo units that have them be abutted to, to each other, and came down through the center, actually being very aware about, you know, the distance of the, the central spine, if you will, to the adjacent properties. And then coming to the beach, the building itself, which, by the way, we lowered in height. So we brought it down about six feet in total height, and made it far more simple in its form to, to make sure it was more compatible with the adjacent property. And then as you come into the pool deck, what we did, before, we had a series of cabanas, both east and west of the property. In this particular case, we decided to put all the cabanas on the west side, as a way to have not just a wall, a buffer, and a wall, but also spaces, if you will, framing the, the, the west side of the property, so any potential noise will be actually centered within the area that we have available as a pool deck. And as you go down, pretty much the connection to, to the beach, as we had it before. This is a view of, of the rooftops, if you will, it's probably more clear in terms of how the buildings are sitting. And another thing that we did, and, and this is pretty much thinking about how these buildings would behave, if you will, and it's, it's kind of a, the word that we thought would be appropriate, with the buildings next door. What we did is, we took into consideration the setback, the ten-foot buffer setback that we need to have next to, to, to the one-story property next door on, on the west side, and made the, the volume of the house, if you will. I'm talking about this, this condo on, on the west side, southwest of the property, and the cabanas be one-story in height. So you have a one-story to one-story. And then twenty feet from the property line will go up to two stories, where you have, you know, appropriate space for that to happen. We did that on the southwest condo, and also on the northwest condo, where we have a two-story adjacent house. We also did a two-story, ten feet, two-story. And then twenty feet from the property line, we went up to three stories. So that's pretty much the, the, kind of the big moves and ideas, to be very compatible with our, with the neighbors, take the noise to the middle, and, and make it so we'll resolve the issues. What you will see next is a series of diagrams showing how that works. There was also a comment about the underground being too high. Obviously, we need to check the grades and make sure that the grades work properly. What we did, and this is based on some technical evaluation, we brought the basement down two more feet into the ground. So it's only about two feet from, from existing grade, and actually, once you grade the whole site, you know, maybe pretty much at zero. So the idea was, again, hearing on the comments that, that we heard before, to try to accommodate everything and bring it down as much as we could. In terms of what we think it will feel like, this is a view, you know, past, in the past, we would say it was a birdside view, now it's a drone view. This is all about technology, but this is a drone view looking from the beach area, if you will, just pretty much standing on the beach, looking north. What you see here is our proposed changes to Kaya in the middle, so you'll see the cabanas on the left side, on the west side, the lower pool building, the condo buildings as they go north, the pool itself, and then on, on the west side, on the other side of the, of the property line, this is a true-to-life depiction of the home to the west. In terms of the location of the pool, the height of the building, the way that the volumes are working, we, we took care in depicting that as much as, as we could in terms of the actual volume and the relationship of, of the two side to side. So what you see here is, is how they work together as a whole, and, and also in terms of the landscape buffer, and, and making sure that we were, you know, complying and, and going up in terms of, of the amount of buffering that we could do with landscape, you know, we would, we were proposing to, to beef that up as much as we can within reason to make it work. So it is actually a wall, buffer landscape, a wall, and the cabanas. So it's, all, all this comes together at that particular location. I'm going to go through, see us more views, so you can see how it works. This is a lower view, looking into, pretty much right there on into the property line. On the left, the existing neighboring property. On the right, again, the wall, the buffer, the second wall, the cabanas, and the pool deck of Kaya. What you see here is the lower, oh, sorry. Is the lowering of, of the pool building itself, a lower view, looking into that, pretty much seeing how clear this separation between the pool deck and the neighboring property is. This doesn't even show the actual buffer area, it's just kind of within the Kaya property, more centered. And we're trying to, to, to respect the geometries, also notice here how the, the actual progression of height happens, where, you know, here on the, on the east side, where we have, yeah, no neighboring property, we go up to the, to a three-story height. And that's how we're respecting the, the height coming to the west. More views, coming into the deck. There was another concern about how big this, this deck would be, and how many people would it have. We, we designed it so it won't be a big deck with a lot of people. It's a controlled deck, a controlled pool, if you will, with four, with four open cabanas and some lounge chairs surrounding the pool with a pool building on the back. A view from the pool building to the ocean, again, showcasing the buffering on the right, towards the west. A view as you move closer towards the east side of the property, we're pretty much doing a very similar condition on the east side with a wall, a buffering, a lower wall, in this case, won't have to go up as much. A ramp access that will take you from the pool deck and all the, all the access that we have from the north on a ramp down to the lower deck and then into the beach. And then a view from the north, looking south, addressing the issue of accessing to the basement of the, of the, of the condo buildings on that particular location. That's pretty much it, that summarizes the presentation.
Can you address your revisions to your lighting in that plan? Specifically, how it would affect the wildlife protection zone, south?
Well, prior to this, what we had done is, we did a photometric study showing the, and actually, we selected dark sky fixtures to make sure that, you know, all that extra light was being controlled, correct.
You never revised one of those, or has, has it affected mater, nothing has affected it materially?
No, nothing has affected it. The, the only big change really is, instead of going on one side, we're not going through the middle in terms of the lighting of that section, but we haven't revised anything from the last view. If anything, we're probably going to be a lot more controlled in terms of the fixtures to, to the buildings. If you look at this conceptual drawings, we're taking most of the fixtures that we had shown before as a concept out of the architecture, so the light will be much lower, which was one of the concerns, as you said, before. Thank you.
Mauricio, two questions. One, there was a question raised during the last planning commission, whether the southern parcel would be open to everybody. I mean, there was some misunderstanding. Is there, is access limited to the southern parcel, or is the general public accessing the southern parcel?
Well, there's, there's no gates in, in the project, north or south. So you should be able to access all the way to the pool deck. Obviously, the pool itself will have to be controlled with the fence. That is state law and, and needs to be controlled with the fence. And, and from there, both if you come in front of the beach or to the beach, you'll have to have a control fence at the pool itself, that is required. However, all the way to the pool area, there's no fence, it'll be, it'll be the open.
You mentioned that the vegetative buffer was increased. Could you provide to the planning commission what the required numbers are and what this proposal, how we've increased it since the last go-around?
Yes. The required provisions within the buffer are the following. For canopy trees, we need to plant three trees per every hundred linear feet. We're proposing five trees per every hundred linear feet, so we're increasing that almost twice. For under-story trees, it is required to have two trees for every hundred linear feet. We're proposing sixteen trees for every hundred linear feet. So we're being, I was saying, as I was saying before, being very conscious about how to make the buffer be a lot more than what's actually required. And, and for shrubs, it is required to have eight per every hundred linear feet. We're proposing eighty for every hundred linear feet. So, again, we're trying to be as conscious as we can, building this, this buffer properly.
Have you selected the primary and under-story trees type of vegetation yet?
David, is there something more appropriate for Patrick to, to reply?
If it's all right, I could call Mr. Hodges to answer that question. Okay, thank you. I have no more questions for Mauricio, and unless the commission has any other, I'll call her next morning.
I have a question. Mr. Castro?
Yes, ma'am.
The buffers that are on both sides, will those be concrete block walls with stucco?
Yes.
And how tall will they be?
Six feet. At, at the property line, which is what is allowed within the code right now.
And I noticed that your condominium buildings are also on that peninsula as you go down from 30A going south. How much turn do you give your car to go underneath the building?
Scott, maybe more detail in how that worked out. In terms of the, what it's, on the outside, we run outer turns and all that from some point of fire access, normal vehicle access, and, and it proved to work fairly well. In terms of the garage, I'll show you that in, in a sec. I have that detail. It's maybe a little bit small here on, on screen, but what we have is, this is all based on parking standards, all the distances are as controlled as, 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 as anything else in terms of how it works. We're coming on the side, ramping down. What you see here is a ramp, and that has been tested on a 3D model, as well as the sections that, that we have, and, and actually, we also have a, a complement to this, which is a technical drawing with all the sections, elevations, and, and, and plants, if you will.
So it's underground?
It's, it's underground.
Underground park?
Underground parking, for this portion only. The other buildings will have, yeah, will have parking at grade. So you go down, you have the eight designated spaces for the four units that you have in place. You also have handicap spaces available for the pool building, which obviously are, are required, and few guest spaces below as well. With, with that in mind, we have the, the four points of access, the units on top, they're separate access. So as you're down there to access the unit, you go through a different door. To go upstairs, we have some area for storage, as well as a bicycle parking area, if you will, for the pool facility, and some, what we call, obviously, backup house for maintenance, you know, what the pool building may require. All that happens below, to a point, we're not going below the pool. We're, we're stopping at the edge of the pool building, if you will, which is everything that you see here. So this will be the, pretty much, the, the edge of- So this will be the, pretty much, the edge of the basement, and then from that point, we'll be upgraded with the pool itself as it goes towards the beach. So we're pretty much sinking, if you will, everything that we'd like to have out of sight, the cars and the bicycles and some of the backup house issues.
Any other questions?
Just one question. Are you doing anything to rearrange the townhomes to the north of that square?
No, sir, no. That has been kept the same. Everything that we've done is pretty much building a U on the architectural package, which had the four condos, the pool building, and the deck. So it's all that area, nothing to the north, no more changes about that. It's exactly, I've been going back to the concerns we had before, those were the main concerns, and that's what we worked on.
Any other questions for this witness?
Your base material that you're using on the ten-foot easements on either side of the development with those buffer areas, what will be on the ground? What's your...
You mean the planting materials?
Yes.
For that, I'll have to call Patrick Hodges, our landscape architect, which should be able to provide the right answer in terms of the plant materials.
Thank you.
Should we call Patrick?
Our next witness, we'll call Patrick Hodges to answer those two landscaping questions.
Good evening. I have been sworn in.
Thank you. What was your name, sir?
My name is Patrick Hodges. The first question was, what were the understory trees that we're using?
And the main trees.
The main trees are magnolia, the canopy trees.
Which kind of magnolia?
One of the salt-tolerant varieties that was mentioned by Mr. Davis.
Okay.
Okay. Then the understory trees, we have red bay, tree form yopon, and myrtle holly. We also have a cultivar of southern red cedar called Spartan juniper, which is very salt-tolerant, very dense evergreen native. And to answer the other question from Ms. McCaslin-Horn, the shrubs that we are using include Walters Viburnum, Dwarf Yopon Holly, Saul Palmetto, Coonty Palm, and a couple of others that escape me at the moment.
Okay, so I misunderstood. I thought that was like a pedestrian walkway, where those ten-foot spans were between the concrete block wall and the building.
Used to be. They moved the walkway to the middle.
Okay.
Yeah. We have a pathway on the east side that's grass, lawn, turf grass, but the ten-foot areas are planted buffers, landscape buffers.
Planted buffers, okay. That should help with noise, too.
Oh, yeah. Any other questions?
Any other questions for this witness?
Thank you.
And I should have mentioned that Mr. Hodges is our landscape architect. I didn't qualify him, so I just want to get that on the record.
Send his resume.
Yes, ma'am. Our last witness is Jason Romer.
Yeah, my name's Jason Romer, local builder.
You were sworn in, correct?
I was sworn in, yes. Just want to say, I'm a local guy, you know, been here about fifteen years, building houses a little over that, build along 38, high-end homes. And just real, you know, partner and I, who's in the audience here, just real grateful to have this property. We've, you know, we've had a vision of stewardship for 38, doing the right thing with this property for our community. It's been easy with these guys. These consultants have responded well. It's something we're really proud of. The parks, the walkability, just the whole idea behind the project has, you know, we think it's the quintessential 38 project. We think it's the right development for the area, we're excited about it. One of the things I wanted to mention is, one of the first consultants I hired said, "You need to listen to the neighbors." I said, "How do I get approved?" He said, "You follow the code and you listen to the neighbors." We've had seven community meetings. If you count the last planning commission, that's eight that we've listened. We're continuing to listen. This compromise that Mauricio just proposed, that's a result of listening again. So we think we've listened hard, and we continue to make these, you know, they're compromises, but they actually turn out to be better for us. You know, if you could look at this version compared to the last version, those four structures were one structure. It was one big structure. We challenged Mauricio to make it more compatible, and now we feel like the scale of this is better than good. It's something that really fits in well between Sand Cliffs and Alice Beach, and I like it a lot better. There's a lot of reasons it's better. I wrote down a few. There's two walls, not one. There's more landscaping than required. The cabana structures separate the neighbor's house from our development. The traffic route is down the middle. So, anyway, I'll stop there, appreciate it, and thank you.
Anybody have any questions for this witness? No? Okay, thank you.
No other witnesses at this time, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Before we get to public comment, let's take about a ten-minute break, and come back.
I sat in on the long meeting one time. Somebody pills these things together after every meeting, because I know the people that are in here aren't there.
Do we even need to wait and see if we're actually here?
No, go ahead.
Okay, we got everybody back? We'll go ahead and call a meeting back to order. And before we start taking public comments, just a couple quick housekeeping things. I know this item's been heard previously. There's a lot of people signed up to speak. I would ask that you be considerate of everybody else that's here, both on this agenda item and on the ones that are to follow. We do have a nine o'clock time certain end to tonight's meeting, and we'd like to get through as much as possible. If you'll just keep that in mind as you speak. And also, try to limit your comments to a maximum of three minutes per person. I think that will help us move along a little bit. And I'm gonna go through the list of people who have signed up.
My name's David Sims, and I've been sworn in. I just wanted to say I'm in support of Kaia. There, I'm on this portion right here. I'm right across from the area that y'all saw before, that was the flooded area. And right now, as I speak, the area's getting flooded again. We have mosquito problems over there. I know the county has brought out mosquito control a couple of times to spray the area, but, you know, with all the concerns regarding mosquitoes in Florida right now, I feel like Kaia's gonna solve a lot of these problems by improving the grade in that area and doing the underwater system that goes to the back. Also, I know that they've put in a lot of time on this project, and it really looks good. I like the new improvements that they made, that they showed today, and I just wanted to say that we couldn't probably ask for a better developer to come in and develop that side of the street.
Thank you very much. It looks like Jason's the last name? I can't, I'm having a hard time. Yes, sir. Is it Ian?
Ern.
Ern, okay.
R. I R B.
Okay. Were you sworn in, sir?
I have been sworn in, yes, sir.
Okay.
Last name J A S O N.
Last name is J A S O N. I live at 83 Walton Bonita, which is about halfway down the project on 38. My house back on 38. I've owned the property since 2000. I've been watching it develop over the years. I saw a developer go in there and dig a big ditch, and then nothing happened. I know Alice Beach almost went in there and took part of that over. And I've been very concerned about what was gonna go in there. When Jason came in with his project, it was just fantastic. He said he's had seven meetings, but he didn't tell you how many times he's changed the plans. Every time someone came up with a question or an issue, those of us on 38, first of all, they listened to us and they made changes. He did the same thing this time. They came in, they had some questions. I think he's really gone above and beyond with what he's done there. He's got a six-foot wall, and then he's got a twelve-foot cabana. I mean, you couldn't expect much more from him. He's always done what he says he's gonna do, he's always done what he thought was in the best interest, and he's one developer that I actually trust. So we're very happy with what he's doing.
Thank you, sir. Did I get your name right?
Boehner, yes.
Would you spell it, please?
B A E H N E R. Could I...
Were you sworn in, sir?
Yes, I was.
Okay. Do you have a copy for the...
I'll make it quick. I know we've pretty much been through this once before. I just want to give you guys a little, show you that our neighborhood, Sand Cliffs, is being surrounded by this new development. I kind of drew in their ninety-foot, two-acre parcel next to the Sand Cliffs neighborhood. I live at 347 Sand Cliffs Drive. I've got that highlighted on that front page. And then I kind of showed you pretty much where their pool area's gonna be compared to my personal residence. We, our neighborhood is not a rental neighborhood. The people that live in this neighborhood, the majority of them live here. This is a residential preservation area, and the two acres next to me, as it was when I bought my property, is a neighborhood, it's the neighborhood infill. The picture that I have on the second page there is from the front of my house, my master, it's from my master bedroom to the beach. Where that white house is there is gonna be the Kaia Beach Club. And it shows you the proximity of our personal residences compared to their property. Keep in mind that that piece of property that comes down to the beach is not even a hundred feet wide. It's like a third of a football field, as we know, a hundred feet. And my concern is, it just does not have the compatibility with our neighborhood. And as the development guidelines say, that with existing neighborhoods, there should be no new commercial or workplace uses within a 250-foot buffer around areas that are residential preservation areas, which ours is. Now, they couldn't get 250 feet away from our neighborhood because the lot's only a hundred feet wide. So I understand that they need a beach access, but I don't understand how they can put commercial property, they're calling it an amenity building, it was originally called the Kaia Beach Club, and that's really what it is. You can call it what you want it, but as the letter came in the mail, and it explained the community, they have 138,000 square feet of commercial space, including retail office, limited lodging, health, fitness, back-of-house services, and a beachfront pool. So it clearly states that that is commercial. They might not say it now, but it will turn out to be commercial. It, I mean, it has to be when you're dealing with 150 residences coming down a two-acre, hundred-foot parcel. The compatibility with the noise, I don't know what it's compatible with. Alice Beach has concerts, they're about five football fields away, and we hear, if you have our windows open, you listen to all the music that they're playing five football fields away. This thing's on like the thirty-yard line. So it's very close, not only to my house, but a few of my neighbors. I know the people that live in the middle of our neighborhood might not have a problem with it, but this is a big issue, commercial endeavors this close to a residential preservation area. So I hope you guys, this is considered the noise factor. There's just gonna be way too many people coming up and down through that ninety-foot, ninety-plus, ninety-five-foot lot. And I don't have a problem with them getting to the beach, but the noise level is just gonna be unbelievable. So there's no way, shape, or form, this is compatible with anything that's close by. And I don't know of really any other developments on 38 that had their beach club actually on the beach. So if it was just for the two acres, it'd be different. If it was just for the neighborhood infill pool, that'd be different. But it's for hundreds of homes across the street. So I just want you to take that into consideration when you make your final decision on this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Pat, I'm off.
He's not talking.
Mauricio?
I said he's not speaking.
Thank you. As the commission is aware from the last meeting, I represent Mitchell Brothers, who is an objector to the project. Before I speak, I would like my client, Eddie Mitchell, to speak.
Okay.
My name's Eddie Mitchell, and President of Mitchell Brothers Incorporated.
Mr. Mitchell, were you sworn in?
I was.
Okay.
The company owns property at 350 Sand Cliffs. My property is immediately next to the 2.2-acre parcel, south of County Road 38, included in the Kaia planned unit development. I was notified when they joined, they had twenty-four acres, they jumped across the street and added this 2.2 acres to the 24. I was never notified of that, even though I'm adjacent to the 2.2 acres. To this day, I haven't figured out how that happened. Under the Land Development Code, this commission must consider whether proposed development will create adverse impacts from noise or lighting that are detrimental to the reasonable use or quiet enjoyment of existing developments in the surrounding neighborhood. I believe the proposed development will absolutely interfere with the reasonable use and quiet enjoyment of my property. Currently, there's a single-family residence on the property where the pool and proposed beach, pool amenity building, will be built. The pool, as depicted on the plans, will be built within ten foot of my house. The house that's there right now is a one-story house, it's, you know, just a single-family dwelling. While I understand the staff is recommending that pool is only for community use, not commercial use, the impact on me will be the same. And I agree with the gentleman before me, it's not gonna be, it's gonna be commercial. It's obvious from seeing what it looks like. The pool serves 148 residential units, and is the only pool, it is the only pool on the property that's near the beach. They have 24 acres of land across 38, and they're trying to squeeze this beach club on the beach. It just doesn't, why don't we take the pool and put it on the other side of 38 where it should be? Just like Alice Beach and other people do, they put it within their community, not against their neighbors. Common sense dictates that the noise level around my property will increase substantially. The landscape buffer is not going to have any significant impact on the noise. Right now, I'm in a single-family neighborhood, non- Right now, I'm in a single-family neighborhood, non-rental. My house can only be eighteen-and-a-half foot high, that's their height limit on houses on the beach in, in my community. Very quiet, I mean, very quiet wouldn't even start to, you can go down there on Fourth of July and you may see, you're lucky to see two or three people out on the beach, or couples, or, or families. Additionally, common sense dictates that the beachfront pool amenity building will be used for events. The lights from the buildings in the evenings will likely be visible from, from my property and the noise from the events will be audible from my home. I don't, there's no need in me trying to sit here and stress how, what that's going to be like. I think everybody sitting at this meeting right here knows what's that's going to be like to go from where we're at now to where we're headed if this beach club goes in adjacent to my property on the beach. However, I read the compatibility analysis submitted by the developer that states the proposed beachfront pool amenity building will not produce adverse impacts from noise or lighting that are detrimental to the reasonable use and enjoyment of my property. That tells me that the developers aren't as honest as a couple of gentlemen just mentioned. I mean, anybody with any common sense might as well fess up that that's not the case. It's just, just not the case. We all know that. However, I disagree. I believe the impacts from noise and lighting generated from the use of the pool and amenity building will be detrimental to the reasonable use and enjoyment of my property. Under the Land Development Code, this commission must determine whether the Kaya Plan Unit Development is compatible with and complements the surrounding neighborhoods. I assert that it is not. This commission must determine whether the proposed development is compatible with the subdivision or other developments within a quarter of a mile of the infill parcel, not the greater thirty-eight community. My lot is part of the Sand Cliffs subdivision. The setback requirements in the Kaya pub are not compatible with the Sand Cliffs subdivision, which is a residential preservation area. The setback should be fifty-foot minimum instead of ten-foot. And it really should be two-hundred-and-fifty foot, because this is definitely a commercial endeavor. My, there again, I restate, my house, my house has an eighteen-and-a-half foot height limit. What they were proposing here is forty-something foot high. They, they showed some things while ago of a new concept of a pool area. I mean, there's a simple answer for the pool area, is take the pool area and put it on the north side of thirty-eight. Don't, don't bring all those people down to thirty-eight, let some of them stay up at the pool and some of them go to the beach when they want to go to the beach. What they showed while ago was almost then, they're, they're going from bad to worse. I've, I've never seen the amendment they showed while ago. They had plenty of time to contact me, or tell me, or show me, or, but what I saw, it, it basically completely cut off my view corridor. Kaya has a hundred-foot of beachfront, I have a hundred-and-thirty-foot of beachfront. Right now, I have a huge corridor because my neighbor is in a little single-family dwelling. Been there for thirty, forty, fifty more years, I don't know how many. The pool and the, on the deck in this concept and, and the one they were showing while ago is far southward of any of the existing houses there, is, is far southward. I mean, it, it, they're not, they're not even taking into effect the neighbors and, and the rules that you have to go by when you put in a pool and you put in a deck and, and you got setback limits and. I, I just ask that y'all reconsider. And please, please ask Kaya, I have no problem with Kaya, I think they'll, if they put it over on the north side of thirty-eight, I think people could enjoy it over there. I, I just ask that y'all, let's all go by the rules that we're supposed to go by and, and recommend that they do that. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of exhibits that I'd like to introduce and then I would make a statement.
Okay.
I believe that there is no, David, Mr. Teriak and I discussed this prior to the meeting and I don't believe that there's any objection to the exhibits.
No objection.
The first exhibit is an excerpt of the transcript from the March tenth Planning Commission meeting. Dr. David Depew was here live and testified at that meeting. Because the commission has already heard that testimony in an effort to streamline our presentation, we're just going to, for record purposes, resubmit that transcript as Exhibit One. I'm also going to resub, I'm going to submit an updated version of his report that was provided to the commission at the last commission meeting as our Exhibit Two. And then as Exhibit Three, I'll also resubmit a copy of his resume.
Thank you.
And I have a copy for the clerk as well as each of the commissioners. While my client is appreciative of the developer's efforts to be a good neighbor and include comments from that last commission meeting and the new design that's been presented to you tonight, I will say that these changes sort of underscore the frustration that you heard from my client with regard to this project, which is, there have been a number of amendments to the proposed plans. Some of those amendments have been last-minute amendments. And in fact, we have not seen these plans that were presented to you tonight or had an opportunity to review them to determine what those significant, what the impacts of these proposed changes to the plan that was before you at the last commission meeting are going to be to my client. Based on the, what we've seen here tonight, you heard my client indicate that he's got a couple of concerns with regard to the view corridor. We have some, and some other concerns, but I will say that the changes of the plan don't address the core problems and the core legal issues that we have with the south-side development. And as I indicated at the last commission meeting, our issue is not with the north side of the property, our issue is with the south parcel of the property. While it's specifically with the pool and the amenity building that's being proposed on that parcel, we think that all of the south-side development frankly violates the Land Development Code and the Comprehensive Plan. We've raised the issue of compatibility. We still believe that the size and scale of the development is not compatible with the size and scale of the surrounding neighborhoods, especially the Sand Cliffs residential neighborhood that's adjacent to the south parcel. The proposed development includes multi-story, multifamily housing and amenity buildings. The developments are immediately adjacent to that parcel to the east and the west. Both have single-family residences or empty lots that are approved for single-family residences, not multifamily housing. If you look at the PowerPoint that was provided to you tonight, I think that the, the designs that were presented to you are a much better indication than anything you've seen up to this point as to exactly how close that development on the south side is being built to the Sand Cliffs neighborhood. You've got a screen of trees between the developments, but otherwise you're almost property line to property line in terms of the development. The other issue that we have is if you look at page eight of the compatibility analysis that was submitted by the applicant, it suggests the setback requirements and the developer is requesting remediation are consistent with the traditional neighborhood developments within the greater surrounding context of the thirty-eight community. It's our position that under the Land Development Code, for purposes of surrounding, compatibility surrounding neighborhoods, does not entitle the developer to look at all of the thirty-eight community. But again, you've got to go back and look at the developments within the quarter-mile of the infill parcel. And the strongest consideration has to be given to those subdivisions are other developments that are adjacent to that infill parcel. Again, we come back to this issue of you're being asked to approve a plan that allows for the development of this beach club or beach amenity building that's about twenty feet off of my client's property line. For my client, this is going to be the result of living next to like a water club beach club. Who wants to buy, I mean, right now, he's living next door to a single-family home. He's about to live next to, if this development goes through, a beach club. Think about a watercolor beach club, a watersound beach club, and living within twenty feet, having your house within twenty feet of that particular building. That's where my client's concerns with regard to this project derive from. While we understand that the developer's made some efforts to distinguish this from a commercial use and that staff is requesting that restriction in the development order that prevents a commercial use, there's nothing in that development order or in the staff report that defines or limits what commercial use means. Does that provision mean simply that no one can sell food or alcohol at the facility or operate a store? Or does that restriction allow the developer, the homeowners association, to hold events at the amenity building? Does that restriction allow, excuse me, restriction allow the developer or the homeowners association to rent the facility to homeowners and that, their guests? It is foreseeable, like other properties in Walton County, that this beach club amenity could be used for weddings. Does that constitute a commercial use with regard to this particular building? It's our position that the use of the amenity building for commercial purposes and regardless of whether there's any monetary exchange, violates the setback requirements that are related to the Sand Cliffs subdivision, which is a residential preservation area. We're asking, you're essentially being asked to obliterate the setback requirements related to a residential preservation area by approving this project.
Do you want to show me in your expert report where he calls it commercial? I've been looking for it and I don't see where he calls it commercial.
He doesn't call it commercial.
Okay, that's all, that's all I needed to know.
My point is, I think there's a fine line between what constitutes commercial and what doesn't constitute commercial. Nothing better than the wedding issue in Walton County brings out to light. We assert that the proposed development also, again, goes, violates the setback requirements as we've heard with regard to the fifty feet. Because again, we've got a residential preservation area that contains more than seventy-five percent of one- and two-story buildings. In fact, the Sand Cliffs neighborhood contains a hundred percent of one- or two-story buildings. We also think that even if you look at this project as just a new neighborhood infill development, the proposed project still doesn't meet the setback requirements that are found in Section two-point-zero-one, point-zero-two, Section J, subsection three, subsection B, subsection III, subsection C, C, subsection seven. The staff report recognizes that the setback requirements are not compliant and they're requesting, or indicating that a deviation is required as requested by the applicant. Our position that those deviations are significant. They're not warranted and again, they're not compatible with the immediately adjacent neighborhoods next to this development.
Are you saying that the deviations requested are south of State, or County Road Thirty-A?
That's my understanding from reviewing the application and reviewing the staff report.
Just out of curiosity, are there any parentheticals that you found in case law?
With regard to this particular setback requirement?
Anything that's kind of anecdotal, anything that you might be able to offer us as to what maybe the first or the second circuit has said about? Maybe the Supreme Court has said something about it? And I, look, I'm not trying to put you on the point, I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, 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 I, I guess I'm trying to kind of interpret your question because I think that our position is just looking at the language of the setback requirements that's contained in the Land Development Code. This violates that clear, express language of the Land Development Code.
Sure, and I think what my question is, is have you found any parentheticals that are analogous? Is there anything that you found that might help us say, well, this is what a court's decided on this issue before?
I have not looked at that specific issue. I will tell you that, as the commission knows, that some of the setback issues are going to be addressed by a circuit court. So, some of this issue, frankly, remains to be seen in terms of how a court's going to rule with regard to that two-hundred-and-fifty-foot setback issue. While I understand the developer's position is that has nothing to do with this project because they're not proposing commercial development, I also understand that the developer intends to take that decision and frankly, apply it to the other provisions of that same portion of the Land Development Code. And by doing so, I think that issue will be determinative of what happens at the circuit court level. That, you know, in terms of that particular appeal. And frankly, I'm not sure that there are really any analogous issues. But like I said, I haven't, I have not specifically done that research. And I would be happy to do it if the commission wants.
I've been in your shoes, I was just wondering if, you know, there was anything out there that you may be able to offer us?
Yes. You've heard my client indicate that he's got concerns about the impacts of the noise in terms of his reasonable use and enjoyment of that particular property. Again, we appreciate that they have made some efforts to buffer that by putting in the landscape, there are impacts related to that. But still, the core is, you've got a, a beach club that's going to serve fifty-three people at a time, which is a significant difference from the current use of the property right now as a single-family residence. And that you can't help, but it doesn't matter how many trees you put up, you're still going to have noise related to the use, and that's going to affect my client's current use and enjoyment of his property as a result. The last thing I want to raise is that if you look at the plans that have been presented to you, there is development south of the coastal construction line related to this project. The pool area is entirely south of the coastal construction line. The cabanas are also now south of that coastal construction line. You'll note that Dr. Depew on page nine of his report addresses this particular issue and says that the pool and a portion of the parking structure mounting to an arming wall penetrate the well, or penetrate well past the coastal construction line. And we have concerns that the Comprehensive Plan policies indicates that the county should not approve that type of construction unless the permits for the construction have been issued. I have not seen any indication in any of the documents that have been provided to the Planning Commission or the county that indicate that orders, or excuse me, that permits have been applied for, much less approved with regard to that particular development. There are also issues with regard to fill, fill material and where that's going to be and how that's going to comply with the White Sands Protection Ordinance. It's, again, our position that the position of this pool and the position of the beach club violates the Land Development Code and the Comprehensive Plan. We believe that they're not consistent and compatible with the surrounding areas. And so, for those reasons, we would urge the Planning Commission to take a really close look at this development and consider denying the application at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any more questions for this witness? No, thank you. Eddie Mitchell?
I guess Eddie.
Oh, I'm sorry. Patrick Hodges?
He's our expert.
Go on. Sharon Higgins?
I've already been sworn in. Logue Higgins, hyphen A. L-O-G-U-E. L-O-G-U-E, like Vogue, Rogue. Hyphen Higgins.
You have been sworn?
Pardon?
You have been sworn?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to know if anybody knows if there's been a traffic incurrence. Study done? Anybody?
Yes, sir, they have. It's part of the evidence for this particular project. It's going to result in a portion of fair share payment that will exceed one half a million dollars.
That doesn't mean anything to me.
Answer's yes.
Answer's yes.
Okay, but you're saying you're going to pay, pay because of your traffic? Yes?
We have a system that if the roadways that are impacted are over capacity, our system allows you to provide mitigation for that and other operations.
Are we privy to the traffic study? As John Tupac?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to see it. I live in Seacrest, and that is the next mile and a half going west. Camp Creek Lake is the, is the western border, Sand Cliffs Estates is the eastern border. You approved the hub. With their townhouse is not even finished and only half of their commercial properties are trafficked through our area is about. are trafficked through our area is about quadruple to quintuple, because we now have all the service trucks from the hub, et cetera. That's one concern. We have a new huge development going up, where 38 and 98 convene, and that's going to send traffic back our way. Our community's only access to the outside world is in Watersound Parkway. This is going to make an unbelievable mess. I can count on some days, and we're not in summer, 20 to 30 vehicles, and I can't get out of my driveway. That's why I asked for the traffic study. You are now going to have 148 cars doubled, if you, if these are big mansion houses and there's two cars for every one of them. The traffic impact is going to make it maybe impossible to go to the dentist, the doctor, the grocery store. That's a real consideration. The other thing that is, that 148 homes with an average of, say, six, is going to give you 900 people. And they're going to be crossing to this 95 or whatever footage thing, all of them in the same area. How are you going to accommodate that? You know, it'll be impossible to go any further than Watersound Parkway because you're going to have constant traffic, pedestrian traffic. I concur. There's no place on the south side to have 900 people going back and forth all day, they should have it on the north side. That's one question. The other one is, we hear, well, this is for the public. What's for the public? Is the beach house for the public? Is the pool for the public? Is the health and fitness center for the public? That means even more traffic. So if I can't get to my own places, if I can't get to Frank Brown Park to swim, can I go to their pool? I mean, this is just such a huge can of worms that you are putting on a community that does not have the infrastructure for it. When I leave my driveway and I go down and I want to make a left turn on the Watersound Parkway, what am I going to do with all the traffic? With their automatic right turn? Wait an hour? What you're doing is creating a landlocked situation for my whole community, for one. Definitely for SandCliffs Estates. The other issue is neighborhood preservation. I have been down here since the early 90s, went through the Com Plan and all that. No commercial was part of it. I will guarantee you, because I have seen it happen over and over, what they say here is not what they do. We've got things permitted all the time. Oh, this is three bedrooms. And the day it gets permitted, it goes up five bedrooms. Oh, we're only going to use this for our own people, health and fitness, et cetera. When do they start offering memberships to the public? You have no idea of the impact on the quality of life and on the ability of all of those who live full-time, especially in the community of Seacrest, to just go about our daily business. So the more you can curb that traffic, the better off everybody is. The pedestrian traffic has to be curbed, because kids run out in the street all the time without looking. We, I don't want to be afraid to drive out of my own house, out of my own neighborhood, because there are kids running all the time. You see it. If you were down here and you saw spring break, you would see the problem. You can hardly move, because you don't know when kids are going to be darting out. I'm asking you to take all of these into consideration. I don't think neighborhood infill was meant to be anything those. What the gentleman said before, are we going to honor our land development codes? Are we going to honor our comprehensive plan? Are we going to say, no, we'll make an exception here, and here, and here, and here? Please take these things into consideration, whether or not you're going to allow a dangerous situation, pedestrian traffic, whether you're going to allow all of us who have been living here for a long time to be able to get out of our own neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Ed Epps. I live at 240 SandCliffs Drive on the beach. I've been sworn.
Thank you.
And I think that we've got some gentlemen here that can be worked with. I see some things they've done to change the plan that made it better for everybody. The beach club, there ought to be some way that, that could be dedicated to the private property owners, where they couldn't have a concert there with a big band and so forth. I think that could be put in the covenants or something. I know they're working on the Watersound Parkway, and I hope they can work something out. I have faith that they're doing their best to alleviate that problem that we see. I've had 12 cars in front of me sometime. It will get worse, and I think the county really has obligation to work on the traffic situation with them. What concerns me also is this customary use of the beach has popped up. And I see that the same attorney is representing them, is representing the county trying to steal our beach. And that's, looks like a little conflict interest there. But I think that that could be remedied too, by getting an attorney to handle conflict. I'm sure he would disagree with that, but I feel like that these people are honest people that could be negotiated with. I think that this gentleman here makes sense when I talk to him. I think him, the gentleman down at the cul-de-sac, could sit down. I think you might have some deals there. And the main thing is not having a concert there, because I've heard concerts down the beach is miles away. And this is a private community, and we're getting away from the concept. And I hope that some cool heads gets together and negotiates something that's agreeable to all. That's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Greg Hattaway?
Greg Hattaway, I've been sworn in, and I've been down here about seven years as a part-timer. I'm from Alabama. And not a builder, I'm not a lawyer, not a city councilman or any of that, and I haven't done my homework. So I'll start out with that, but I know these folks have done their homework. So my, I just got a couple of questions. Who actually, I'm two neighbors down from, to the west of where this project is going to be, actually, 1-2-3, three neighbors down. And it's 338 SandCliffs Drive. And, you know, we bought here for the privacy on the beach. And I know, I don't know what numbers, you know, the county's got as far as how many people can be in a certain space, and I hadn't read the regulations or anything like that. But, you know, if you're putting, dumping 900 to 1,000 people, you know, 300 feet from me, you know, I've seen it, you know, I've seen Alice, you know, with the binoculars, and I've seen Rosemary, and they pack some people in there. And we're talking 125 feet, or however many feet it is, I've heard 90 or whatever, maybe I'm getting my numbers mixed up, but the, unless, you know, I understand people wanting to go to the beach, but my question is, who owns that beach? Anybody know? Public. Okay. So there's no phases where, you know, let's say Alice, I mean, you talked about the county, you know, is the, is Alice on?
Talk up this way if you would.
Does Alice own all the way to the beach?
Um, I don't know the answer to that question.
Anybody know?
They have a pool on the beach.
They have what?
They have a pool on the beach.
Anyway, what I'm asking is, is, you know, are they going to, are they going to have 100, whatever their access is on the beach, is that what they're going to be limited to? Are they going to be able to spread over to the neighbor's beach?
Well, as far as building?
No, the people.
The people? It's a public beach, as far as I know, I mean.
Well, that's, that's kind of what I'm asking, that's the main question, you know? So they can, they can come down, well, they can't come through my yard to get to the beach.
Are you trying to limit people walking down the beach?
No, no, I'm saying on the beach. I'm just saying that if the crowd, like I said originally, bought it for privacy, so they're going to bring in a bunch of folks and take the privacy away. That's my concern. And, and then how far, where are those people going to go? They're going to go east, or they're going to go west?
I mean, you can have people come in three miles up the beach and walk as far down as they want to, as far as I know. And you could have crowds do that.
Well, that's, that's what I'm asking, I'm just asking, where, are there some areas that have all the way to the waterline, some don't, you know?
I mean, what, I mean, what do you want to know?
Are the, are the 1,000 people going to be allowed on, like I said, I hadn't done my homework, so I don't know.
Well, let me ask this question. Do you know what the mean high tide line is?
I know about what it is. I mean, I, it, it changes, correct?
Well, I, I guess that's the question I'm asking you, do you know what it is?
No.
All right. Well, the way that I understand it is this, that line is the demarcation point for public access. And somebody else can correct me if they have more information than that. Now, the, the question I think you're asking is, are those people going to be able to come onto your property? Or will they be able to disturb your quiet enjoyment of your property? Is that the question?
Correct.
The answer to that question is none of us know. That's the reality. We don't control that. I don't believe we do.
No.
I think what you're asking is, are all those people going to be funneled through that little narrow corridor and then spill over onto your beach? Is that the way that you need to be saying what you're saying?
Yes.
We, we don't have any control over that. What we can tell you is that the mean high tide line, the way I understand it, demarcates what is public and what is private. If they come onto your land, that will be up to you to deal with either the sheriff or those people personally, I believe. And keep me, keep in mind, I'm no expert, I'm just telling you what I think.
SandCliffs Project's already dedicated as a public beach.
So our neighborhood is a public beach?
Mm-hmm.
So they'll be coming our way if Alice is not a public beach?
Anybody care? It's a public beach.
It's a public beach?
No, I'm saying, maybe, not making myself clear, I'm saying, you're saying my backyard is a public beach?
I don't know what you mean by your backyard.
The line that he's talking about.
The lot inside the four of your survey you're talking about?
He's talking about down on the white sand there.
That's a public beach.
No, I'm, I'm saying from where you're saying to the back, to my steps.
That's your property.
Right. So you're saying that's, I misunderstood you. You're saying that, that is, SandCliffs is something you said?
SandCliffs dedicated their beach to the public. Their, everything from the vegetation to the mean high waterline.
So you're saying my backyard is not my backyard, it's the public?
I don't know what your backyard is.
We don't know where you live.
Well, I told you 338 SandCliffs.
Well, I understand that. What we're saying is, public beach is public beach.
Right.
And then what you're, what you're asking is this, is your portion, what you believe be your portion of that white sand, extends to the mean high timeline, does that belong to you?
Yes.
The answer to that question is yes, but it's been dedicated to the public.
Okay.
Does that answer your question? They can use it because it's been dedicated.
The next question would be then, the Alice question. Do they have the same public beach, or do they own that?
Don't know.
I don't know.
Don't know.
Because that's going to make them go one way or the other. I mean, if I call the sheriff, somebody's got an umbrella on my, on my beach, well, he's going to say, hey, that ain't your beach.
Because we're not the sheriff, so.
Right. Yeah, that's what he's going to say then.
And why would you do that?
Well, I'm saying, I, I wouldn't, but, but I'm saying, I, I might if it got, if it got 900 people on my beach.
Okay, in the interest of moving along, what, what, what are you look, what kind of answer are you looking for? What, the question?
I'm just expressing my, like these others, I've just, I just walked in, and I've noticed that it's about, you know, there's probably, from that, people that have complained are the people that have been supporting it. It's been a little bit more complaints than there have been supports.
Okay.
So I'm just, you know, telling you what I think, and, you know, I'm just letting you know that, you know, I don't know what the rule is. Maybe, maybe there should be a, a number limit. Y'all, I mean, who's?
We don't do that.
Who does that?
That's way, be way over our head.
Yeah, the pay grade doesn't extend that high at this board.
We can't go there.
I mean, that's just, that's the truth.
Okay. So, so it's not even, not being looked at or anything as far?
It's not within our purview.
Yeah, we can't look at it.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I learned something. At least my backyard is not my backyard, like I said.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Wade Gillam?
Hi, I'm Wade Gillam. Gillam, G-I-double-L-H-A-M.
Have you been sworn in?
I have.
Okay.
I live at 50 Gossemer Lane, number 17 and number 11. I own both properties. I'm about three-quarters of a mile west of this proposed development, and I would just like to stand with the previous speakers and the Gulf, Gulf Sands homeowners, and that I'm opposed to the size and, and size of this complex. I too have had significant problems crossing 38. I had, my, I live on the north side of 38, and have had to wait 10 to 15 minutes at times to get, just walk across the street to get to the bike path. So it is kind of a, I am very, very concerned about the amount of traffic that'll add to the property, and on 38 especially. So I would just encourage you to consider the, the density situation that we're, we're currently living with, and I'm afraid if we set a precedent, letting a property of this size be added in that area, that there will be additional properties allowed in the future. So that's, those are my comments. Thank you.
No, that's, that's Boehner again.
Yeah, we already have the right.
We had Mr. Boehner. Mr. Boehner, is there a Ginger Boehner here with you?
B-A-E-H-N-E-R.
B-A-E-H-N-E-R.
And I have been sworn in.
Thank you.
Well, I, like most of the other people that have spoken tonight, am in disagreement with this community, this development. One of my big concerns, and the engineer stated it very first thing that he said, was they're taking three different land types, put a putt over it, now it's all magically one type of land, and it's not. I live at 347 SandCliffs with my husband. We're within 30 feet of the community building, and somebody asked, where did it say that it was commercial? They wrote it when they sent out a letter that, that notified us, and I think my husband read that to you, where it said, you know, the commercial space including retail office, limited lodging, civic, health, fitness, back-of-house services, and a beachfront pool club. They identified it as commercial. The last meeting we came to, one of my big concerns was the weddings, the parties, the noise, and I think you asked Mr. Ramire if that was going to happen? Not a yes and no answer. I don't know at this time, which to me means that they are going to have parties, weddings, things like that, which will disrupt our quality of life. We're full-time residents in SandCliffs. We work every day. We don't have the privilege of staying up till 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock at night, listening to people having parties, and then getting up and going to work in the morning. Also, the density of that 100-foot parcel that goes down there seems to be out of compliance with what's going on in SandCliffs. It's very dense. Almost all of the property is covered in, in houses. Another thing, if you go from a major development to a minor development, I don't know the whole rules, but it seems in my understanding that by doing that, they don't, if, if they change something, they don't have to get it approved. So right now, they're showing you plans that have the beach club reduced by six feet. But I, I would think that if they wanted to raise it six feet under the minor development, they wouldn't have to get that approved or bring it to anybody's attention. they wouldn't have to get that approved or bring it to anybody's attention, just like none of these new plans have been brought to anybody's attention. Let's see. I think that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all we had sign up, is there anybody that hasn't been heard that wishes to be heard? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the hearing. Mr. Toriak?
We have a, a little bit of rebuttal, Mr. Chairman.
I would expect so.
Okay, uh, Scott?
Yes?
Scott, did Eddie Mitchell receive certified mail notice, return receipt for this meeting?
Yes, it was sent out to Mitchell Brothers Incorporated and copies that have been provided to the, to the county as our notifications.
And do you have the return receipt in front of?
I do, well, I have the receipt, though, it was sent, the green card has not come back yet, I can't even make them accept it, so.
And there was, uh, some question about the notice that went out and how the wording was included in the notice, did you draft that, or where did you pick, get that language?
We actually take that directly from the advertisement for the county, and, and the way that I read it, it actually states that, uh, and it, and it may be a question in the wording, but it states that there are a hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred sixty-two square feet of commercial space, including retail office, limited lodging, civic, health, and fitness, back of house, and a beachfront pool, not a commercial beachfront pool, it's just listing all the things that are included in the development.
So is the beachfront pool amenity a commercial use?
No.
There was a question about deviation to setback south of thirty A, is the applicant seeking any deviations to setback south of thirty A?
No.
No other questions for Scott? I don't know if you all have any follow-up before I call one more.
Any commissioners have any questions of the applicant?
Uh, just one question, um, regarding this stuff south of the thirty A, has the density of that changed at all with this latest?
Okay.
Yes.
Jason Ramire? Jason, did you hear, uh, some questions about whether you have commercial on the south?
Yes.
Did you originally want commercial on the south side?
Yes, when we, when we, when we purchased the property, our plans were to develop some commercial uses on the property, when we contracted for the property, I should say, with the main family.
And why did you not include commercial uses on the southern parcel?
Um, we submitted our plans originally, uh, we, we, we designed a, um, a, a building, a structure on the south side that was, um, capable of having commercial uses. The staff gave us comments, and they, um, it's my understanding that they, their comments, they didn't think that commercial was compatible on the south side, and they asked us if we would, um, agree to no commercial on the south side in their comments, and as a compromise to move towards approval, we agreed to have no commercial on the south side.
Thank you, no, no more questions?
Will there be any type of sales or anything at that beach club building, or just?
No, there's, there, there's, there's no commercial uses on the south side.
So it's just basically like a bathhouse and restrooms?
Yes, yes. Restrooms, um, perhaps, uh, some seating for our, um, homeowners, but no commercial uses.
And that's accessed only by property owners?
At, yes.
Okay.
Jason, I actually do have one more question, there was, uh, reference to you should have a pool on the north side, not the one that you put the south side, this site plan has a pool on the north side as well, doesn't it?
Yeah, there, there, there's a pool, a larger pool with double the capacity on the north side.
Okay, thank you.
And, and also every home that we build, we plan to have a pool in every home as well. This is simply a pool on the south side with a world-class resort of this caliber, we think there's a moment, if you buy a three million dollar house, when you walk up to the beach and you see the pool as you enter the beach, we think that's an important component to this level of development.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that all, Mr. Toriak?
Yes, sir. I would do a brief closing when it's appropriate.
Can I ask, can I ask y'all any more questions before he closes? You're, you're up, sir.
The end, that was appropriate. Do you have eyes on here?
Took it out.
Glad this was quick.
I wonder why I couldn't find those.
Yeah, well, I did.
This computer's not happy with, uh, stick. How much is it?
It's okay, I, I don't want to close this, yeah.
Click it right there, just click on it.
It's, uh, this is a part point, no, this is a...
It's the wildflowers.
Yeah.
Do you have anything to do this?
Wait, sorry.
Let me just close this one sec. I have to discuss all this. Yeah, there we go. Thank you.
I'll be brief, and first of all, thank you for your patience tonight. Uh, we were fortunate enough to get a recommendation of approval last go-around. I think when you look at the opening slides, this is anything but somebody trying to put ten pounds of sugar in a five-pound bag. The, the openness, the invite-ness, the larger lot sizes, the openness of the public to be able to use the pedestrian trails, the bicycle trails, I mean, this is not cramming huge amount of development on twenty-six acres, this is, I think, exactly what people say when we talk about the vision on thirty A of what we wanna see. The key difference from the last time we were here to what we're discussing tonight is, come on, there we go, is this slide. We listened to the comments and the concerns about noise and the pedestrians coming down along the edge, uh, and so what we attempted to do was to address those concerns and to end up with a beach amenity that is even better than what we showed you last go-around. You, you have a six-foot wall, you have a vegetative buffer that in some instances is a multiple of eight times the requirements for vegetation, and then the best buffer of all that you can put between something that might create noise and somebody concerned with noise is a building. And we have cabanas that are gonna serve as a buffer for any noise on the pool amenity. Uh, the scale has been reduced, we lowered the, the beach clubhouse, and we even altered, we broke up the four condominium unit building into something, four separate buildings to help with the scale. So we believe that the project that we submitted and that you all, um, voted to recommend approval last go-around, that as a result of the comments that we heard, that we've made it actually better. And we would, if you agree with us, we would like your recommendation of approval again, and add as a condition, uh, the tweaks that we've made to the beach amenity and the pool house. Uh, this is a first, a, a, a first-class, five-star amenity that I believe you all will be very proud of once it's completed, and, and we ask for your recommendation of approval. Thank you.
Just one question, uh, has staff reviewed the, uh, proposed changes to the south side?
Wade?
Mr. Kramer, that, we have, we have not looked at those, uh, that was brought just sort of, I think as, not as a, uh, official submission, I believe they brought those tonight just to try to, uh, show some mitigation efforts, uh, with some of the concerns. Um, if the board chose to accept those, I would recommend that the board make that part of their recommendation, um, it will not change the official application, it, but we would present those, uh, to the Board of County Commissioners as a, as a suggested alternative for the south side of the property.
Subject to staff approval?
Yes.
And ready to engage?
Yes, sir. Um, just looking at it, I, I don't think there's a problem, we have not officially done an official review of that, right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners?
I'd like to make the motion that we accept, this is a very compatible community next door to one of the best communities on thirty A, Alice Beach. And I do hear the concerns of the Sand Cliffs people, I do hear you, but progress on thirty A, most of the high amenity neighborhoods do have beach clubs and swimming pools, they do make that available for their members and for their owners, this is not unusual of what Alice Beach is proposing to do. They're gonna be building a very nice, uh, much larger pool than even the Calissa Pool, so I do make the motion.
To approve with the changes?
To approve with those changes.
Okay.
And staff approval.
And the two deviations?
Yes, the two deviations, okay.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, well, let's take about a ten-minute break while the room settles down a little bit, then we'll proceed with the rest of the agenda.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot our finish, I forgot David's long wind. I forgot David's long wind, so I just shut out.
Yeah, we're gonna be here till nine.
The, uh, Alice Beach harbor, the harbor that takes you down to the big, big waters that come in.
Yeah, that's where the pool's doing it.
We're being here till nine, you know it.
But if you were seeing the size of the Calissa Pool, it's huge, what they're gonna build on, twice the, on the beach.
That'd be cool. I got news for them, they forget that quiet, drunken bitch, that's, that's, that's the thing of the past, you know? Get all that.
Thank you.
Was it a continue? What is that?
Okay, we'll go ahead and call them any back to order, uh, Mr. Dias, I believe you have an item?
Yes, ma'am, Mr. Chairman, we had a request during the break to continue, uh, uh, an item on our agenda, um, trying to expedite the meeting, and, um, it is, uh, the Margaret Fanbro, formerly known as the Ann Thompson abandonment, they have requested that this be continued until the May twelfth, planning commission meeting at five P.M. in this location.
That's item number six?
Yes, sir.
Commissioners?
Motion approved.
We have a motion, we have a second? We have a motion and a second?
Just a question, between, this is a second continuance on this project?
I believe so.
So, third time's the charm, right?
Uh, you got three continuances and this is a table?
Oh, it's three continuances and then a table, I thought it was two continuances, third one after, okay, three continuances?
Effectively denied, we wouldn't get to this one anyway.
That's an unwritten policy, it's not, there's no, it's not, no regulations, it's just a policy the county's had.
Right, I understand.
Right.
Want to say all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on our agenda is number three, the Holiday Beachside Center. Um, I'll ask, uh, Matt Carpenter, planning manager from our staff, uh, to, uh, brief the commission on this project.
If you want to hold the volume down as you actually...
Better hold on a second. Sorry, folks.
Okay, we can go ahead now.
Mr. Chairman, just to rehash what I said a minute ago, this, the next item is number three, Holiday Beachside Center, I'll ask Matt Carpenter from our staff to brief the planning commissioner on this particular item.
Matt Carpenter for the planning staff, uh, this is a major development order application requesting approval to develop an eighteen thousand square foot shopping center on one point nine oh nine acres with future land use of neighborhood infill. The applicant is here and they're ready to present their project.
Good evening, members of the board, my name's Dean Burgess, I'm with Emerald Coast Associates, I'm the, uh, agent to the owner of the project and engineer of record, uh, on the project. I have been sworn. I appreciate Max's introduction of the project, project tonight, um, I have read the staff report and concur with the, uh, conclusions, uh, on the staff report. We do meet the land development code and comprehensive plan. As far as the, uh, location of the property, it is on the, uh, northwest corner of Scenic Highway ninety-eight and Holiday Road in Miramar Beach. Um, you probably think, well, that property's not vacant, it's not, it has a Alvin's Island on it currently, and, uh, that will be, that was, uh, the old, uh, you may remember the, uh, I think it was called the Shark Bite Restaurant and any number of things prior to that, it's a very old building and, and it really is time for it to come down. We will be replacing it with another, uh, Alvin's Island and another six thousand square feet of, uh, second, uh, tenant space. It appears like that will more than likely be a, uh, probably a Fat Daddy's Pizza, but some sort of restaurant, uh, is more than likely gonna go into that space. Um, the land use category is infill, um, which is what, uh, that coupled with the building size is, makes this project major. It's within a flood zone X, the entire property is in flood zone X, there are no wetlands on the property. Our setbacks are twenty-five in the front, they're required to be twenty-five, side, they're twenty-five, they're required to be ten, so we're larger on the side than required. And in the re, in the rear, our building setback is two hundred and eighty-one feet, um, rear setback is twenty. So we're considerably further, uh, on the rear, which is adjacent to the, uh, uh, street to the north of us, which is Cross Creek. Height of the building is thirty-nine point five feet, um, pervious surface ratio is fifty-three point seven, required is sixty, florary ratio is only twenty-one percent, required or allowed is fifty. We meet our parking ratios, we actually have three additional parking spaces than, uh, than what's required. Very briefly, stormwater system is an exfiltration system, um, the pre-development, uh, discharge, there is a, uh, pre-development discharge off of the property, in the post-cond- development condition, we have zero discharge off of the, off the site, so there ought to actually, in the twenty-five-year storm, be an improvement in some of the drainage that may, uh, have been witnessed.
Like the easternmost exfiltration could be wider?
Excuse me?
The eastern exfiltration sys, part of the system could be a little wider, is that what you're saying?
Uh, no, what I'm saying is that we, uh, do not have any discharge off of the, off of the property during the twenty-five-year storm, it's all contained within the, within the retention system.
Just barely, or are you over? I mean, I know it's high and dry there at that location, and the fall is away from you to the north, I think, generally?
It is, generally to the north.
And, uh, there's no pop-off for this project?
Oh, no, there is an emergency pop-off, uh, toward the northeast, in the event that, uh, that we do experience a, a storm higher than twenty-five years, yes, sir. Basically, that, that was my summary of the project, if there was any questions from the board or from the, uh, if there's any questions raised by the audience, I'd be happy to reply to those when the time comes.
Mr. Kramer?
I have a few dozen questions, Mr. Chairman. Dean, uh, wanted to ask you regarding, um, the, uh, architecturals on the building, it appears that it's a, uh, two-story building from the front facade, and I'm not particular of whether that same facade is going down the, uh, Holiday roadside or, or not, or is it just along thirty A that it has the appearance of a two-story?
I should, I should have mentioned in my, uh, discussion, I do have the architect and our compatibility expert with us. Regarding the, the, um, the building facade, it is a one-story building, uh, it has high ceilings in it, um, for display and to add some, some, uh, character to the building. That facade does continue down north-south, uh, along Holiday Road.
One of the questions I have that were particular to me, and I think to the neighbors, and also how it affects the wildlife lighting ordinance is, is the second story that appears to have, appears to have windows, or they just look like windows? to have windows, or they just look like windows on the second story?
Those are display windows and...
Lighted display windows?
They are, they are lighted display windows, however. Staff had a comment that they asked very clearly and specifically for us to address how those windows will be lit and how they meet the wildlife conservation zone. Lee actually has a section of that window, I'll ask him to come up and explain that in a moment, but in general, the merchandise will be in the windows and the lighting will be affixed to the wall facing inward toward the merchandise. You will not see the light source that illuminates the merchandise, nor will there be any illumination visible from the beach, which is a key concern.
Typically, there's got to be some reflective process off of the glass as well, though. I mean, it is glass.
It's glass, but again, the light is shining away from the glass onto the merchandise. There'll be a glow, no different than if you're in a residential room in a house, a bedroom, or whatever have you, and you have the light on.
So basically, this second-story look has no other effect other than to be advertising on the scenic corridor?
They're literally pocket windows that would have to be accessed by a, a rolling ladder inside the store. Yes, sir. The, the existing store, I believe, is two-story. Correct?
The existing store is just like this one, it's a large volume, and you go up on this rolling shelf display, and you then walk in to the back of the rooms from those rolling displays. So you're accessing it from inside the two-story volume, if you want to call it, it's just a large, tall ceiling, and you access it through the, through the display shelves on the inside.
Well, on my lighting report, I've got pretty much...
Excuse me?
I'm Lee Goodson with Bullet Dice Architects, and I have been sworn in.
On the lighting report, you see that you have spillover out onto the scenic corridor out there, County Road 2378. And everything on my lighting report all has zeros on it, except in the back parking lot. Why would this thing show spillover onto the adjacent property to the west and onto the south in the, in the diagram, but everything, everything has zeros on it until you get to the northern portion of the parking lot, which is, to the northern portion, which is the parking lot? They're effectively, this thing is effectively showing no lighting coming out onto the, around the building. Can I believe that? I mean, because they're all zeros, and that seems pretty unfathomable to me.
The building itself goes through a lighting analysis at the time of the building permit. This particular exhibit is to demonstrate the illumination of the parking lot, the exterior lights. At the time of the building permit application, they look at any lighting that is affixed to the building itself.
So we don't have a report, then, that shows us projected lighting from the building and from these windows out onto 30A and Holiday Road?
We don't, there would not be any, there wouldn't be any spillover lighting, because again, it's not directed in that direction, and it's also not intended to illuminate like a security light in a, in a parking lot, where you, you need to have a certain amount of light for parking lot safety, so somebody at night doesn't twist an ankle or, or hurt themselves in the parking lot.
David, if I could, we don't use any wall packs on our buildings. We use only shielded lightings in the parking lot that, to meet the turtle ordinance. We only use the downlights in the parking lots that have shields on them. And so, we don't use any of those wall packs on our buildings at all. So there won't be any lighting coming from the building or any wall packs on the buildings.
Okay. Well, this is my major concern, because its proximity to the Gulf is close. I mean, it's probably less than 300 feet.
But you can't control the light on those wall packs, and so that's why we don't use them.
I appreciate that, but when the report that I'm looking at shows all zeros in the candle over, I'm just wondering if it was a mistake, so what I'd ask staff is, is there another review that you get a lighting report that shows actuals after the building's up? Or when do you submit something that shows what the lighting from the building? Or is this what your, your engineering is saying, that there's no lighting coming off of those windows, bottom floor and second story, that's any kind of spillover? Is that what you're saying?
At the time of, of CO, I'm not aware that the county goes out with a light meter. I suppose it's something that the county could start doing, I wouldn't have any objection to it. I, I stand behind our, our lighting study.
Right.
Now, the turtle ordinance, what they're concerned about is there not be any exposed luminaires.
Right.
It's not the glowing in the window that attracts the little turtles, it's the actual luminaire being visible. And we hide all the lights. In other words, the, the lights that illuminate these, the clothing that they'll sell this play is mounted on the backs of the mullions, and they're on little shielded packets on the backs of the mullions, and they shine back into the store and then illuminate the clothing that's in, in display in the windows.
Yeah, I know. I, I mean, I, I hear you on that, but I just can't say that, you know, it's, it may not be refracted, refractive or reflective light off of the glass, or off of whatever's the background of the display in the upstairs windows. I mean, to me, the whole purpose of this, of you putting this second level of windows up there is just advertising.
Well, it's the additional display space, absolutely. That's exactly what it's for.
I know, it's quite the scenic thing. Anyway, I have other questions regarding, I'll let the rest of the board take on it. How many fire hydrants are being added in this project to what's existing out?
There's one hydrant. Yes, sir.
And to ask staff that met all the minimum requirements?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
One fire, one fire hydrant additional is enough to meet all the minimum?
Within 500 feet, and that, that requirement is confirmed as being in place by Sammy Sanchez with South Walton Fire Department, and he has signed off on this particular supplemental.
Okay, and just to step back into that lighting thing a minute, you guys are going to submit a wildlife lighting plan at some point?
We have submitted that wildlife lighting plan.
And that was, is that the Lumen study that I have?
It is, yes, sir.
Okay. And art and drawings didn't show the revision. I'd like, would you address that? The building footprint, I understand it went down from what I calculated, because I over-calculated your impervious surface ratio when I did it, because, but your building has been scaled down from 21,000 on the drawings, I've got to 18, and I don't have a drawing that shows that.
Okay.
So did you address that?
Sure. The building, in an effort to reduce the scale of the building and meet some of the requirements that the staff had as far as their comments, we did reduce the building to 18,000 square feet, 12,000 for the Alvin's Island, and 6,000 in new tenant space. So, yeah, the, from the 21,000 square foot building that was originally proposed.
So your impervious surface ratio is still below .6, right?
Yes, sir, it's 53.7 percent.
In your, besides the two exfiltration systems that you have under the center of each of the two rows in the rear parking lot, is, could you explain to me where the pop-off's going to go, and is it retained on-site for the pop-off, or is it just going to the, to the, to the land around, around the property? Where the pop-off is? Stormwater's just, I mean, it's raining today.
The pop-off goes to this northwest corner of the property. It would be in the northwest corner of the property, and as you said, it, it would go on down to the north on the, along Holiday Road.
Okay. So, yeah, out on, out on the Holiday Road?
Yes, sir.
And counties looked at that and they're okay with, that's the place for a pop-off? Okay.
It's actually on the northeast corner.
I'm sorry, northeast.
Yeah, I understand. I saw where his point. Thank you. Those are my only questions. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else have any questions for the developer?
I just thought it was an interesting concept to have the little island over there on the corner where the stop sign is.
The footwash area?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Was that to eliminate traffic, or help bring people in there?
Well, that was, the, the footwash was obviously being close to the beach. We're trying to invite pedestrian traffic from the beach into the property, and we architected that and thought it was a good idea to, to put in there, and I think it'll, it'll be well utilized.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll open the public comment portion. Mr. Lee Goodson?
That's me, and I think we've addressed everything unless anyone has any...
Buddy Page?
Unless you have some questions.
No. Anybody else that has not been heard that wishes to be heard on this item? We'll close the public comment portion of the hearing. Messengers?
Before we discuss, regarding the lighting thing, I'm just, you know, being so close to the beach, I wanted to know how we, at what stage, as the county, do we determine that there's no, other than code enforcement, I guess, that there's no problem with the lighting from those windows being refractive or reflective into the turtles?
We expect at the building permit stage that the wildlife lighting plan will be reviewed, both for windows and whatever illumination they're providing.
Thank you.
In addition to this review.
I appreciate that. That's all I have.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
A second?
We have a motion.
With, with conditions? Were there conditions?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions of the president's staff report.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that brings us to our fourth item on the agenda, it is a methman petition for abandonment. I'll ask Tim Brown from our staff to give a brief presentation of the planning commissioner on this project.
Good evening, Tim Brown with Planning and Development. The language is not quite right on here. It should be requesting the abandonment of the south 33 feet and the west 16 feet of the east 33 feet, less than except the east 17 feet of the east 33 feet. I know that's confusing, but that's...
They're asking for 17 feet.
16 feet on the north-south, 33 feet on the east-west.
So it's backwards.
Well, it sounds like if you read it, they're doing, it's less than except the east 17 feet and the west 16 feet, which would be the whole 33-foot easement would be less than except, but that's not what they're requesting. So it's a little, it's a little confusing. Hopefully I haven't confused you more.
So what they're asking for is the adjacent 16 feet of easement to their property to be abandoned?
Yes.
Running north and south down the existing Martha's Lane?
But it's the east 16 feet of the 33 feet.
No.
It'll be the west.
I'm sorry, did I say, I'm sorry, yes, it's the west 17 feet of the east 33 feet.
Is it, is it the west 17 feet, or the west 16 feet they want?
16 feet.
Okay.
Yes.
16 feet of the east 33?
Yes.
No.
There's mud.
No?
No.
East. Well, yeah, that would, of the 66-foot easement, that's the west 33 feet, that's right, yes. So hopefully I haven't confused you more, but, I mean, I don't have any other comments than trying to straighten out the language. This goes hand in hand with the next item, so I want everyone to be aware that this, this does play into the next item on the agenda.
Can I ask you a question, then? From your search of this project, are there any other abandoned easements on Martha's Lane?
I don't know. I don't know the answer.
It shows on the drawings that we received in there that it looks like a 66-foot easement all the way down to at least the back of the Junior Food Store?
The applicant may know better than I, whether there's any other abandements.
I'm just, I'm trying to reiterate that, I don't know if anything's happened recently. I, I did a project on Martha's Lane, the little mockingbird states was one that I did many, many years ago, a little three-lot subdivision. We didn't ask for the abandonment of those, that easement then, but it wasn't a dense development.
Yeah, three lots.
I have a question.
Yes.
Okay. Is this easement within the 300 feet of the CDL-PZ zone? The Coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone? If you zoom that out, how far is that from Oyster Lake?
Be real close, but probably not.
Yeah, I think this is beyond the 300 feet. Otherwise, we'd have a map. We'd have, we'd have a map showing the 300-foot...
I, I couldn't find the map on what I was looking at, that's why I was asking. Is there any way to enlarge that and let us see it?
No, that's a slide. It's a slide, we can't enlarge it. But if it was within 300 feet, we would have put it in the staff report and provided a map.
Okay.
Well, that's Oyster Lake, or is that?
It's a tributary off the Oyster Lake.
There you go into the description of how far up on the Coastal Dune Protection is the...
Well, we have two different maps. One is the Coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone, and then there's a tributary zone as well. So there's two, two different GIS layers and two different maps.
And you reviewed those, neither one overlap this part?
Well, I didn't personally review them. No, I took this project over from Brian, so he had did all the research in the staff report, I'm just presenting it.
Public Works was against this. They said that it would really elevate the drainage problems in the area, so, I'm just saying.
Are they automatically against every easement?
Yeah.
Yes, they're, they're going to object to any abandonment, and, and for various reasons, but they're going to always object.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying they don't have legitimate objection, I'm just saying they normally object to every one of them anyway.
Yes, they do.
Okay, any other questions for staff before we go to the decision?
Thank you.
I'd still like to see if we're, you know, since we've changed, changed representatives on staff, I'd like to see if we're within 300 feet of the Coastal Dune. If we're in the Coastal Dune Protection Zone, I'd like to get that answered. Can you do that?
Good evening, again for the record, Dean Burgess with Emerald Coast Associates, and I have been sworn. We have outlined, and it kind of gets into the project a bit, where the Coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone is. It is shown on our site plan. It does not enter into the easement. This bold dash line is the Coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone. It's probably worth noting, on your, on at least the screen here, the easement goes beyond our property to the west. I believe in, in error, it went all the way over to where it does. Our property ends roughly midway along that southern red outline. We don't go all the way over unless that's image, well, that's...
That image has turned 90 degrees.
No, appears to be stretched. It is.
It is stretched, yeah.
Okay. Our property is, is basically almost a square. The image is stretched, yeah, side to side. It was, it's deceiving. But there is no Coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone within either of these easements that we're asking to abandon. I did want to elaborate that the southern easement basically did continue to the east, and it has been abandoned. So basically, the southern easement...
That's the one that backs up to the Junior Food Store on the other side?
No, it actually backs up to Calypso Point, this subdivision here, and there is no continuance of that easement along Calypso Point. You're correct, the, in the north-south direction, there's a 66-foot combination of two 33-foot easements on each property that runs from Allenwood Road down to County Road 30A. The reason for the, for the odd numbers in our, in our abandonment, we're asking to abandon 16, the east-western, 16 feet of that north-southeasement. And the reason for that is it, it leaves 17 feet of easement remaining, coupled with the other 33 feet that are on the Calypso Point property equals 50 feet, which is the county minimum right-of-way width that they like to maintain. So in observance of that right-of-way width, we only did a partial easement abandonment, only what's, what's necessary to carry out our project. If there were any questions of the board, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Was that easement, I got one, Dean, was that easement that's going north, was it abandoned on the properties north of that before? Because it looks like it dead-ends into them.
No, it's to the east, not to the north. No, that, that easement does continue on those, on those lots. The property appraisers website and the county GIS do not show those easements. You have to pull those from other sources.
So it does continue?
It does continue, yes, sir.
Yeah, Martha's Lane is really 66 feet wide.
You know, the only reason that you see the easement to the east on Calypso Point is because that easement was shown on the plat, so by virtue of the plat, it was shown on the property appraisers and county records.
Anybody else?
Well, I need to ask a question. Is this piece of property owned by Thomas J. Methvin?
Yes, sir, it is.
All right. I need to put something on the record just to make sure. Thomas J. Methvin is one of the principals at Beasley Allen Crowe in Montgomery, Alabama, it's a law firm, does a lot of personal injury work. I have referred cases to them in the past, I have no relationship with this gentleman, but do have relationships with the lawyers in this firm. I don't think that creates conflict for me one way or the other, but I do at least want to make it known in case there is any objection to be voted on this item.
Do you feel like that will prevent you from making a fair and impartial decision in this matter?
In no way, I just want to make sure it's on the record.
Okay, thank you, John.
All right, thank you.
Okay. A couple people who ended up in the public comment portion of the meeting. Sherry Roberts. Would you like to state your name and have you been sworn?
I'm Sherry Roberts, and I have been sworn. I am the HOA manager for Calypso Point, and I just have a couple questions that, I tried to get ahold of Mr. Burgess but wasn't able to catch him. I would just like to ask, first of all, I'm kind of curious how you could consider an abandonment on Martha's Lane when, right now, we really don't know what Martha's Lane's gonna be used for. You don't know if it's gonna be for, you know, automobiles, is it gonna be for bicycles, is it gonna be for public walkways? And we really don't know how far it's going to extend into this development right now. So I just am curious how we can consider an abandonment when we're really not sure what we're gonna use that road for. My second question is if a sixteen-foot abandonment from north to south was considered, why would the entire sixteen feet go to benefit one landowner? Why wouldn't it be divided in half and eight feet be given to the Calypso Point side and eight feet be given to the, to the other landowner's side on the, both the east and west side of that north and south Martha's Lane?
Because there's another thirty-three foot easement. Because there's another thirty-three foot easement in between that and Calypso Point.
Okay.
So it doesn't, Calypso Point doesn't border what they're asking to abandon.
You could request the east thirty-three, seventeen feet of that thirty-three feet.
That doesn't buy me what I was trying to get to.
I'm sure Mr. Burgess can help you with that.
I'm, I'm just curious because, quite honestly, Calypso Point is a single-family dwelling. We have single-family dwellings in our neighborhood, it's been there since ninety-five, and I'm just, I'd like to get as much buffer and as much room as I can between that and these multifamily dwellings that they're considering putting in.
If they get this easement, it would probably be easier for you to get an abandonment on the other side then, if that makes any sense to you right now, because they're taking the west seventeen feet or sixteen feet. You could ask for the east sixteen feet on your thirty-three feet, and it's probably accomplishing what you're talking about.
Okay.
That would be a separate issue.
You'd have to come back here and ask for it, so.
Okay, okay. And also, I had one other concern, just like a lot of the communities in that area, we have drainage issues, so I have a real concern. I've got some homeowners that are bordering Martha's Lane that have water coming into their yards currently, and I just, it's been my experience that any kind of development exacerbates those issues.
Okay.
So I would just like you to consider, you know, that as well, the draining issues and what's gonna be happening with Martha's Lane.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Michael Klein?
Michael Klein, last name spelled K-L-E-I-N, and I've been sworn in. I think you misunderstood what Sherry's question is. As the applicant stated through his engineer, there is a sixty-six foot right-of-way that extends from Allen Loop Road down to Thirty-Eight. That is for the use of Martha's Lane. Currently, Martha's Lane runs from Allen Loop Road down to the northern property of this, the northern edge of this property. It is, in its current state, it is a eighteen to twenty-foot wide gravel road, but that right-of-way exists so that a road could be developed and built on a public right-of-way from Allen Loop down to Thirty-Eight. Since there is no plan by the county or this developer to improve the entire Martha's Lane, and the townhouse project that he's proposing on this site uses a improvement to Martha's Lane on part of that property, the abandonment that he's asking for, that sixteen feet, leaves a fifty-foot right-of-way between his eastern property line and the right-of-way up to Calypso Point. There's fifty foot left, that, that's the minimum standard that the county needs for a road improvement. He's asking for all sixteen feet on his side. If the county needs fifty feet to put a road in, if and when one will be built, why does this property get the entire sixteen feet of excess property? Why shouldn't it be divided equally between the property owners on the east side of that, of that easement and on the west side of that easement? If and when a future road, bike path, or any type of combination of road and bike path is put in from Allen Loop down to Thirty-Eight, you need fifty foot by the county standards. If the county deems that they don't need sixty-six feet and they only need fifty feet, and you give him all sixteen feet, there's no ability for Calypso Point to ask for any more property. Second of all, it puts, if you look at their project that's now coming up, it puts the eighteen-foot-wide improvement to Martha's Lane entirely on the thirty-three-foot easement that's on the east side of that center line. So it puts a potential road that they are proposing to put in that serves their project entirely closer to Calypso Point. If that abandonment was equally distributed, or that vacation was equally distributed to either side of the road, that would put an additional eight-foot of buffer between this project, the access road to this project, and Calypso Point. And the point is, if the Public Works Department is uncomfortable with the abandonment, and it's unknown at this time if and any improvements will be made to Martha's Lane and/or a bike path, then why are we considering this abandonment? And if we, if the abandonment is not granted, then there is no point in even looking at the townhouse project, because the townhouse project totally depends upon them getting the sixteen feet in order for them to meet their setback requirements. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all that signed up. Is anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on this item? CNN will close the public portion. Yes, sir?
Just a quick rebuttal, and I did fail to address Public Works drainage issues, and did want to point out, and again, it kind of gets into the project a bit, we recognize that Calypso Point does have some problems with their western three or four houses that abut our property right along this area. There's a low spot in the, in the property and on these lots that's located right about here. What we intend to do, and what we have incorporated into our project, is to place a drain in adjacent to the road and actually on, within our easement, running along, parallel to our, our road, and it will allow this water to easily make its way to the, to the wetlands that are, that are on our property. Currently, that water, you know, will pool up here and eventually sheets across our property, but it's not very effective, and it does have to build up, stage up on, on their property a foot or so before it's able to do that. So we have planned to alleviate the drainage problems and improve the drainage as part of our project. The two systems will not intermingle. Our, our private stormwater will not intermingle with that water that essentially makes its way to the public right-of-way. Secondly, the improvements on Martha's Lane, we do intend to take this little gravel road that's shown here and out to Allen Loop as part of the project. It will be improved with compacted gravel. We will maintain it as a gravel road to a full width of eighteen feet from the project entrance, actually from our southern property line all the way to Allen Loop. And I hope that answers.
Now, will that be within the easement or that be on your property?
That will be.
Within the easement?
On, well, it's all, it's all easement, it'll be within the easement that exists from our property north to Allen Loop. And you can see the road is, is skewed a bit to the east in the easement. It does largely but not entirely lie within the thirty-three, the eastern thirty-three feet.
You're taking it outside the sixteen feet that you're asking for then?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Is the petitioner a local? Does he, does he, does he own this property, or is he a?
He, he does, he has owned the property for, since at least two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. I'm not certain where he lives. Rick, I don't know.
Montgomery.
Pardon?
Lives in Montgomery.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got a question of staff.
Yes, sir.
Regarding the last public comment with regards to the setbacks and stuff like that, is this accurate about moving the center line of the road, potential road?
Yeah. Well, it does put, if the county's gonna use the whole fifty-foot right-of-way, the remaining fifty feet, it is gonna put more of a burden on the eastern side, because the eastern side is gonna have thirty-three feet, the western side's gonna have seventeen feet. So it, you know, the road won't necessarily be in the center of that, it might be, it might not be, but of the fifty-foot remaining, thirty-three feet's on one side, seventeen feet on the other.
I got another question. What about the, does that easement extend all the way down to Thirty-A?
Yeah.
Because it doesn't show it on this.
No, it's not gonna show it on the GIS, but.
It, it does. It does, and a good portion of the eastern thirty-three feet is actually the parking lot for the, for the Giffey Station or Thompson, whatever it is.
It's still part of an easement, isn't it?
Yep, and the county made a move their air station over out of the thirty-three foot.
In case they need to use it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so it, it does go to Thirty-A.
Any other questions? Anything else, Mr. Burgess?
Just a quick comment as far as the logic that we employed for this. Of course, we did want to be, recognize the fifty-foot easement. If the county ever did want to put a, a road connecting from Thirty-A up to Allen Loop, the proper easement width is there. It's not something that we thought was, was good or, or healthy for our project or the neighbors in the area. I think it would very quickly become a cut-through from Thirty-A up Thompson Road to Highway Ninety-eight. That opportunity already exists on both ends of Allen Loop, and a, a third cut-through, I think, would be damaging to what's otherwise a, a quiet little neighborhood now. And we had the opportunity to access Thirty-A and actually make our project what we thought would be more valuable, because it has Thirty, Thirty-A access and frontage, but it just, the idea of, of completing that connection all the way to Thirty-A was, was something we didn't want to see happen.
Okay. Commissioners?
Did you close public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
We're having a problem with the thirty-three feet on the south, but I, I got issues personally with the seventeen feet on the, I mean, it's like first come, first served, and this project's an out-of-town developer maximizing the thing to nineteen units and then otherwise.
You making a motion?
I'm making a motion to deny.
Completely?
No, I make a motion to deny the seventeen feet. I, I'd, I'd make a motion to approve the thirty-three-foot easement abandonment on the south, but not the seventeen or sixteen-foot easement on the east of the property.
I'll second.
A motion discussion or the other, or a second discussion, commissioners? I agree with that. I think that's a good motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Sure, next item on our agenda is the accompanying development with this petition for abandonment, and it is Martha Lane's townhome. Again, I'll ask Tim Brown to break the planning commissioner on this project.
Does this change this?
This is a major development or application submitted by ECA requesting approval to develop nineteen multifamily town home units on two-point-five, four or five acres with the future land use of neighborhood infill.
Tim.
This was continued from the last meeting.
Does the fact that we didn't approve?
Well, it's a recommendation to the county's commission.
It's a recommendation, it's all it is.
So, but it does go hand in hand. If, if the abandonment is denied, then they're gonna have to redesign, not necessarily kill their development, but they're gonna have to redesign it.
Okay.
Now, this does have a proportion of fair share contribution of eleven thousand four hundred. It has a preservation buyout of twenty-nine thousand seventy-five dollars and fifty-three cents. When they come in to apply it, there'll be a six percent rec fee, and it is contingent upon the abandonment being approved as presented. So that's, that's it in a nutshell.
Okay, so we make, I mean, ours, our, our motion on the abandonment is, is just a recommendation.
Correct, yes.
County commissioners can do whatever they want to do.
Right.
Now, we will hear this, I guess we'd have to, whatever we do, keep that in mind for our purposes, not for county commissioners' purposes.
Yes, that's right, yes.
Anybody have any questions for staff?
Oh, yeah, I do, sorry.
I thought I was gonna skip by you there, David.
Not likely.
The, the buyout on the pines, that was based on the, not an appraisal, but the assessor's valuation.
Yeah, it's based on the assessed value of the land.
Okay. And there was this, is there, is there going to be a public recreation buyout on this? This is based at six percent?
Six percent, yes.
I didn't see a number, six percent of?
It's also based on the assessed value of, of the land. I don't know if there's any improvements, I think there's a house, right? But it's based on the land value, not the, not the improvements.
I, I did the, given the compatibility analysis was, had it based at an overall density, it stated in the compatibility analysis, seven-point-six units per acre. Not that it breaks the bank, but I, I redid the numbers, and it showed that it was actually seven-point-seven-six. I don't know whether that was a typo or not, but, and that's stating that the property was two-point-five-five acres, if I'm not mistaken, which would include the seventeen feet or sixteen feet going down the side. So if we don't take that, if that's not taken, if that's taken into account given our previous vote, then this would push this particular project, even if he could squeeze it in there at nineteen units, would push his density over eight-point-oh, if it, if in fact you all believe that that's compatible with the area.
So would he lose one unit?
Yeah, he'd have to lose, he'd definitely have to lose one unit out of this thing to still make it if we take that, if the seventeen feet doesn't come off, or, because it would go to.
Well, he can count the easement because he owns it. It's restricted, that thirty-three foot is restricted in its use, but he owns that land, so he can include that in his calculation.
I think he included it in his calculations because he was proposing it on being abandoned for the nineteen acres.
Well, well, it really wouldn't matter if it was abandoned or not, he owns the land, so he can use that calculation. The use matters, but not.
Not the space.
He owns that land.
So he can use it for calculating density.
Yes.
Well, I'm trying to remember what the density was based on. If I'm not mistaken, it was based on two-point-five-five acres, exactly.
Well, in the staff report, it says two-point-four-five.
Two-point-four-five?
Uh-huh.
And I wanted to see where that survey, I don't have a survey. Anyway, I just wanted to say that brought that whole, that brought that whole thing into question as far as the density for me, because the numbers didn't work out right.
Nineteen-point-six.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And. And.
Mr. Kramer? If I could clarify on that comment for the record. The applicant gets the benefit of the gross area of the parcel for calculation of density. Whether or not it's encumbered by an easement or not, it's transferred, it can't be placed in the easement, but that density that's approved from the easement will be transferred out to.
Whether he can get the nineteen units he proposes on that project or not.
It's based on the gross area of the parcel. Prior to these easement abandonments, because he still owns the land underneath these easements.
I have a question when you're finished.
Yeah, I'll go ahead.
I need to know, are these three stories?
Definitely.
Are they three story tall?
Two stories over parking. Parking underneath, parking on the first, first floor, two spark, two levels of living space above.
Is that compatible with the neighborhood around it?
It is, and I'd be happy to get into further discussion.
Let's move to a year to their presentation.
Okay.
Let's have staff finish.
I, well, I'm, that, I'm finished.
Anybody else have any further questions for staff?
For staff? No.
No?
Good evening again. Dean Burgess with Emerald Coast Associates. I'm the engineer of record and agent to the applicant for this project. I appreciate Tim's introduction of the staff report. Just to clarify, Mr. Kramer's issue, there's two point four five acres is the overall gross acreage of the property. Nineteen units are proposed, gives a, a overall density of seven point seven five units per acre. So, we're with our, within our allowable unit per acre density. The, the, the project is in a land use category of infill, within, in a flood zone of X. The proposed buildings, to get to Ms. Glassland Horn's comment, are forty-two feet high, and that is two levels over parking. Each of the units will have its own two-car garage. No parking will be on the street, in the driveways, or anything of that sort. I have elevation of the, of the, of those buildings. Where you can see the garages on the ground level and the two levels of living space above. We do have three overflow parking spaces available throughout the, the limits of the project. Our impervious surface ratio for the project is forty point seven with an allowable sixty percent, so we're well below our impervious surface ratio. Some of the design constraints that we had on this project, which also dovetails into the need for the abandonment. This is in a coastal Dune Lake drainage basin that has been identified as having drainage problems. We're obligated to meet the hundred-year storm criteria, which we have, as well as abating some of the drainage issues on adjacent properties that we discussed with our drainage that we're putting in the, in the right-of-way to the east. The drainage will go from this location and ultimately pop off in this location adjacent to the wetlands. Another design limitation that we had on the pro, property is that there is a preservation requirement. We are meeting the preservation requirement on the property, as well as there's some wetlands located on the western edge of the property, which.
Configured our development as shown on this site plan here. Again, coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone runs through a corner of our retention pond, and then within the wetlands, we're well outside of the, the twenty-five percent development that's allowed within that area.
On that hundred-year storm design, we do dis, we discharge at a rate lower than the pre-development rate during the hundred-year storm. And on twenty-five-year storms and, fifty-year storms, it's considerably less. I believe there's no discharge during the twenty-five-year storm. So, that we should see a, an improvement as far as the amount of water going to the, the coastal Dune Lake and, and an improvement in water quality. If there's any questions of the board, I'd be happy to respond.
I got one question. If, if the abandonment that we're talking about does not happen, how does that affect you?
We would have to, due to the constraints and the width of the property, and this probably should have been part of our, our discussion in the, in the abandonment. I didn't want to get too far into the project. It would cause us to probably have to reduce the depth of some of these buildings, or at least a portion of them. We may have to make two duplexes, duplexes rather than one fourplex out of this building. It's just this corner that gets pinched of this one building by the, by the abandonment.
Couldn't you just move it to the south?
The problem with moving it to the south is we, we have preservation requirements, and the existing home sits in the northern part, so there isn't any vegetation that would replace the present, preservation that we impact when we slide it to the south.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I have some questions. Dean, in your compatibility analysis, can you show us in the area, I mean, it's a, the multifamily in that area right there, I believe there's some within the quarter-mile radius immediately to the north. It's multifamily in design, townhouse style. Is that right?
Well, to the, to the east.
Because I have problems bringing, in, into my mind, and I don't know about the rest of the commissioners, how it was compatible in an architectural style. It, you know, being multifamily style and everything else, pretty much around there is single family. If you could just point out other multifamilies in the area.
Well, to the east and, and south, there are some very high-density condominiums, particularly the Palms of Dune Allen and.
Those are within the quarter-mile?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And the, the Palms North condominium. Palms at Dune Allen has a density of eighteen point nine units per acre. Palms North condominium has a density of thirteen point six seven units per acre. And really, what we're looking, what I looked at.
What about immediately to the north? I think that's a townhouse project as well just across Allen Loop Road, isn't it? Backing up to the golf course immediately north of this.
No, I think you're thinking of Fairway Villas. Fairway Villas is single-family homes.
No, no attached in there?
No, not that I'm, not that I'm aware of. But what we looked at is the development to the south of us. Of course, you have the Tom Thumb, which is commercial development. These houses here are large rental houses, that, that front thirty-A, and are often on the rental market. As with the development to our southwest, again, is a, is a fairly high-density development that is rental units. So, what we were looking at was the commercial uses along thirty-A, you know, not far as, as Stinky's Restaurant and the Tom Thumb. To the, you know, recognized single family here, there's a, a transition pattern that this provides, that multifamily.
And the character of the townhomes, again, looking at the architecture of them, it will be hardy, hardy plank siding, again, garages, there's not surface parking like you might expect with a typical townhome development. A pool amenity, and the units are quite large, you know, for townhome units.
And immediately adjacent.
Two thousand square foot mark.
Excuse me? I'm sorry. And the immediately adjacent properties to the north and the south and the southwest are all two and three-story and?
They are. Within Calypso Point, there are two, three, and four-story homes. To the north is, well, vacant lots to the north. Now, to the northeast, they are two and three-story in the new development. I believe that is, what is that development, Rick, to the northeast of us where the new homes are going in?
That should be Sea Point, subdivision.
Sea Point. Sea Point. So, I think it's from, from an architectural standpoint, we're, we're in keeping with the, the types of homes. Now, there's, there's a wide range, especially even within Calypso Point. There's the Florida style, like what we're presenting here with, with metal roofs and so forth, but there's also, there's a, a mixture of styles within Calypso Point. And I, and I reference that because it's the closest proximity to us.
Okay.
Are those balconies that are facing the south?
That are facing the south. Off the backs of the buildings, yes, there are balconies.
Okay.
Off of the upper levels of the, of the buildings, yes, ma'am.
Can I ask you a technical question?
Sure.
In your specs provided in the general, on your civil drawings, a lot of them are stamped approved in, for, for twenty-fourteen, and one page was twenty-fifteen. Has there been, or have there been any significant changes for civil engineering between when those plans were approved for twenty-fourteen that should be updated or have changed today that you're aware of?
I think what you're looking at.
Or that staff's aware of.
Those are the regional utility detail sheets and regional update, updates, it's, it's detail sheets.
Mm-hmm.
And those were the most recent.
Okay.
Detail sheets that are from regional utilities.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the public portion of the hearing. Joanne Foreman?
Hi, I'm Joan Foreman, and I have been sworn in, and I live at three nine nine Allen Loop. And as homeowners on Allen Loop Drive, we have several concerns about the proposal for the development of townhomes on the lot located on the southwest end of Martha's Lane. The property's next to our property. The proposed development of nineteen townhomes does not fit in with the character of the neighborhood, is what we feel. We would rather see single-family homes instead of nineteen townhomes. Or if that's not possible, at least reduce the number of townhomes. We feel the nineteen townhomes will negatively impact the property values of surrounding single-family residences and parcel zone for such. Additionally, there are a minimum number of guest parking spots for the projected population density and number of units proposed. Each proposed townhome is expected to have two garage parking spaces. And they've told us different things in different meetings. They said there are nine additional outdoor parking areas for guests, but tonight they just said three. And on the townhomes, on the plans they showed us, there are no driveways, so you just pull right in to the garage. So, anybody beyond two cars will need to park in just one of the three or nine, or how many additional spaces. They also need additional parking if they have a golf cart or use the garage for storage for items such as bikes, kayaks, et cetera. We feel that the additional parking spaces is not enough to accommodate the nineteen townhomes. Guests and homeowners will need to park on Martha's Lane, which is a narrow gravel dead-end road. This could cause congestion and could block vehicles, causing safety hazards should there be an emergency. We also have concerns with additional traffic on Martha's Lane that could cause degrading the road. Where we live, we're, we get a lot of sand at the bottom of our driveway that comes from Martha's Lane when it, when it rains due to beaten gravel road. In the proposed plan, Martha's Lane is not even paved all the way to Allen Loop. We would like to see it paved all the way. We would also like to see Martha's Lane extended to thirty-A through the current easement that exists to the east and northeast of the Tom Thumb. It would help with the traffic by creating two accesses to the properties, and we just don't feel that people will use it as a cut-through. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Klein?
My name is Michael Klein. It's still spelled the same as last time I was here. I have two concerns about the project. Access and compatibility. Access is to the project, to the two and a half acres, is from Allen Loop Road down Martha's Lane. This is a multifamily project with a higher and more intense use than a single-family property that is north of this project. And we're taking nineteen additional homes and bringing access to them to this property past eight single-family platted lots on Martha's Lane. I feel that the ac, if this type of, of density and intense use of this project, this property is permitted, we feel that the access should be coming from Allen Loop Road rather than through a single-family neighborhood. On compatibility, the engineer states in his, in his compatibility analysis that the proposed townhouses provide a tasteful transition from the commercial development and vacation rentals along the north side of Conroe Thirty-Eight to the single-family residence to the north of the subject property. That transition or buffer may be true if you took access from thirty-A, but it certainly isn't true if the access comes through a single-family neighborhood. It's not a transition. It's putting a higher intense use and access to it right in the middle of a single-family neighborhood. The second issue is in compatibility, he talks about favorably the ten-foot setbacks between these buildings, similar to the ten-foot setbacks between the buildings in Calypso Point. He's comparing single-family houses that may be two or three stories with a ten-foot, a five-foot side yard setback between those buildings and a ten-foot between the buildings, a fifteen-foot rear yard setback, and a twenty-foot front yard setback. That ten feet he's talking about is a favorable compatibility to four buildings with a total gross square footage of eighteen thousand square feet. A ten-foot setback between eighteen thousand square foot buildings as being compatible to a ten-foot setback, a ten-foot buffer between buildings in a single, that's not a favorable analysis. That's not compatible. That's, that's four units together with ten feet between them. I just don't think that's a favorable comparison. I don't think the compatibility analysis is there. The other item is, this is, this is talked about as a townhouse project. Townhouse is really a form of ownership, but it has become to be known as a building type. These are townhouse by nature and design. The units are stacked on top of one another, parking on the lowest level with, with a, a second, a second and third floor living above their units. But it's really, it's really multifamily. If this was a true townhouse project, there would be a plat presented with the project, and there would be individual lots platted with each piece of property. In addition to that, the private drive that serves between the units would be required to be a forty-foot right-of-way as a private road. And off of that private road would be required to be a front yard setback of anywhere from fifteen to twenty feet, putting between the buildings somewhere in the neighborhood of seventy to eighty feet between the road access down the center of the property. Right now, it's about thirty-five feet. The overall density of this property is favorably, compares favorably to Calypso Point, but that's only because there's some encumbrances on the property that, that allow that. The wetlands and the coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone require all these properties, all, all of the development on this property to be put in one area. If you took out the wetlands, and I understand the code allows the gross property to be used in, in comparing or making that analysis, the intense and dense area of the site that's being developed for housing certainly is not comparable to the density in, in Calypso Point. While this project, I'm not, I'm not opposed to, to the development of this property, but I feel strongly that, that the comparab, the compatibility analysis is, is flawed and that the ten, uh, density of the project is, is, is much higher than the surrounding use. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all that's signed up. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this item? CNN will close the public portion of the hearing.
Very briefly, just in response. Very briefly, just in response to some of the comments that we heard. Ms. Foreman spoke regarding parking. We do have two parking spaces per unit as required by the code, and I stand corrected. We have nine additional parking spaces as shown in our site plan. Our site data table is incorrect. It shows three additional parking spaces. It's nine. So we have overflow parking, and I think the idea of garages is a better idea than surface parking. As far as improvements and whether to pave Allen Loop or whether to continue it down to Thirty-A, that was a developer's decision. I think I've already touched on that point. We considered accessing from Thirty-A. We didn't think it was the right thing to do for the neighborhood. We do have people with different opinions, whether we should access from Thirty-A or whether we should access from Allen Loop. We think a road through to Thirty-A, and more than likely a cut-through, would be problematic for us and the neighborhood. It's not to say we get our access where we've located it, that Public Works may still put a road through to Thirty-A. That could happen in the future, and we understand that. But it's not what we'd want to see. Mr. Klein had a number of points and comments about compatibility, the idea that the, I can assure you, the analysis is not flawed. All the data presented in the analysis is correct and accurate. And what we are establishing is a recognition of the properties immediately adjacent, a higher weighting of the projects immediately adjacent to us, which are two, three, and four-story single-family homes coupled with commercial uses and rental homes. We also broke this up into three and four-plex buildings to try and give it some more residential character. The architecture of the buildings is residential in character. The garages are residential in character. All in effort to give these the feeling of home and not a traditional townhouse. As far as a townhouse plat, we understand that. We've done plenty of townhome plats, and I assure you, this is a townhome development. It will have a townhome plat associated with it. And will meet all the requirements of a townhouse plat. As far as density, Walton County's code allows for clustering. That's what we did. We did the responsible thing, did not impact wetlands. We met the compatibility requirements. There are restrictions on the property, and we, it did cause us to cluster our density. I think that clustering pulls the intensity of the development internally, where only the owners within the development are impacted by the setbacks and the party walls in the buildings, the adjacent property owners are not. Our buffers exceed the required buffers in, on every property line of the development. We're on the setback in one corner of the building. Other than that, we exceed the setbacks oftentimes nearly double. I'd be happy to entertain any further questions from the board.
Anybody have any questions?
No, sir.
Okay. Board?
Thank you.
Oh, I did just one. Did you have any plans to pave Martha's Lane out to Allen Loop? Or did you have a public meeting that suggested that wasn't what the neighbors wanted, or...
We have discussed it. We've discussed it with the neighbors. There was a mixture of sentiment. Some liked the little gravel road. We tend to like the gravel road. I guess it's not out of the question if it were preferable to pave the road to our project. We wouldn't refuse that or not comply.
Martha's Lane currently is a gravel road, and it's only probably accessed by four homes, maybe.
Correct. Yes.
And it's on, if I'm remembering right, it's on a pretty steep incline from the toe of the dune there toward Allen Loop Road. It falls pretty significantly, like one to three or something like that.
There's a section there that is...
Yeah, so there's going to be a good deal, bit of erosion, especially when you had proposed thirty-eight cars from nineteen units on a daily, what, two trips a day? What's, I didn't look at the traffic analysis on trips out to Allen Loop, but, you know, over a gravel road with that kind of steep incline, I have reservations over that.
Well, the gravel road will, I mean, there's not that much traffic, and certainly the gravel road will withstand the traffic that we're going to be putting on it. If it's the wishes of the board to see that paved, one of the things we talked about was a concrete apron where the gravel road abuts. Allen Loop Road, at a minimum, would like to, we've agreed that we would do that. Currently, what our plan is, is to stabilize and correct the road width to be a uniform eighteen feet wide. We'd be open to a board recommendation to pave it. Thank you.
Mistress?
Well, I'll start with a, I'm not making any motion just yet, but I'm just saying that it just seems to me that squeezing every last bit of blood out of this project where it's at, at nineteen units, and I'm real familiar with the area. I like it for that, and also some, the public comment brought some good attention in the transition where you bring the higher-density traffic through the lower density seems to be backwards. But I understand that the applicant's interest for not taking three hundred feet from Thirty-A and trying to bring it up there was the difference in the cost for, you know, putting the gravel road where I think it should be paved, but it's, that's a taste issue, too. I mean, I don't know what the neighbors want, whether they prefer gravel roads. Some folks like that sort of thing, but with that incline, I mean, where it falls to the north coming out to Allen Loop Road, it's quite the hill.
I think it would be, I think bringing the access, whether bringing it preferable to Thirty-A, it would be a cut-through. And I think the traffic would be ultimately much greater if you open that up from Thirty-A going north.
Yeah, I think.
I think that the, I mean, they're going to have some hurdles to cross, especially if the easement doesn't get approved, but I think that they've done a good job trying to make this thing work. I think it meets the code importantly.
Right. As a matter, I guess, of character, whether or not that full eight-units-an-acre intensity in that subdivision is compatible with the rest of the neighborhood. I mean, it's certainly compatible by the numbers within a quarter-mile radius. And that meets the code. Whether it meets the character of that particular neighborhood, I guess, is a fine point in a growing community.
We have a motion.
I did hear one of the neighbors say she liked the idea of paving the road out to Martha's Lane, and I have a feeling they're going to have some problems in there with that gravel. If they don't have somebody there to fix it all, you know, almost on a regular basis...
I think paving is a good idea.
So I'll make a motion to approve with the recommendation that they pave the road out to Martha's Lane.
Out to, out from Martha's Lane, out to Allen Loop?
Yes, out to Allen Loop.
Do we have a motion?
A second then?
We have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Would you oppose?
I oppose.
Okay. It is now five minutes till nine. I don't think we have time to handle the next item on the agenda, so I will...
Mr. Chairman, would those be considered to be continued to the next meeting? Do we need a motion for that, Mrs. Ward, to continue that?
Do we need a motion?
No, wait a minute. There is one problem. Well, we had one very, it was a problematic one. We said that it didn't come prepared at this exact meeting that we were going to take.
I think they're prepared, though.
They're prepared, so we can continue.
And it's of no fault of their own.
All right. Just want to make sure they're not burdened by that.
We have a motion and a second to...
Second?
Or do we need a motion first?
Do we have a motion?
I have a motion to continue.
This is a motion to continue the remaining items on the agenda to the next commission meeting.
Okay, so that would be our seven, eight, nine, eleven, twelve.
Correct.
Correct.
Anyone who can make a motion, please?
No one's convinced.
I did.
Mr. Craig did.
Second. Are we going to vote on it now?
Apologize.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We stand adjourned.